By ensuring educational excellence, we challenge and inspire all learners to positively impact their world.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome. This is the Birmingham Public Schools Board of Education Regular Meeting. Today is Tuesday, December 15th, 2020. This is our last board meeting, our last regular board meeting of this calendar year. Again, good evening. My name is Kim Whitman. It is my honor to serve as President of the BOE for the 2020/2021 school year. We welcome each of you joining us this evening on YouTube. And for those who have friends that aren't able to join, obviously, this is being recorded and is accessible 24/7 under YouTube. Birmingham, capital P, capital S. Boy, tonight is a bittersweet night for the Board Trustees. While it is our last meeting of 2020 and we're getting ready to roll into the holidays, we are sad to say goodbye to one of our trustees. So again, very bittersweet. Tonight is going to be Brian Jennings' last regular meeting as a trustee. And we'll save all the goodbyes for the end, but again, very bittersweet. So Brian, you are the man of the meeting.
Aww.
I know. So in the beginning, we are going to start with seven pieces of recognition. And then for the community members, we will then move into the Business Services Report, where we will have a presentation from Plant Moran on our year-end audit results. We will then turn it over to Business Services, where we're going to talk about two items under the Bonds, Roofing and Bleachers and Press Boxes. And then Trustees, given what we talked about last week, we will be voting on two resolutions for Jim. After that, we are going to turn over to the Superintendent's Report, which will include a continuation of the return to in-person learning plan and timeline. And Trustees, we will be voting on that this meeting as per the law. After the Superintendent's Report, we will then open it up for Board Comment and then Public Communication. We do have two public communication submissions for this evening. So our first order of business before we get started is Roll Call. So Joan, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Kim. Trustee Angeloni.
Present.
Trustee Holcomer.
Here.
Trustee Jennings.
Here.
Thank you. Trustee McKinney.
Here.
Trustee Rass.
Here.
Trustee Whitman.
Present.
And Trustee Young.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Allow the minutes to show that all seven trustees are present. Trustees, before we turn it over to the Recognitions piece, I will ask, are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda, please? Nope. Okay, seeing none. George, I will turn it over to you for the Recognition piece.
Thank you very much. Yep. And as you mentioned, we do have multiple recognitions this evening. We'd like the community to know that all of our student accomplishments that we'll talk about in a moment will be shared on our social media and through the BPS E-News as well as through their own schools communications. But right now, I'm going to turn it over to trustee Aljuni for a special recognition.
I have the distinct pleasure and the honor to read a resolution in recognition of Brian Jennings' four years of service. So please allow me to read this. Oh, Brian, such a good guy. And I'm going to get a little choked up. But what I'd like to say is, whereas Brian Jennings has demonstrated competent and caring service to the community, students, parents, staff, and educators of the school district for close to four years. And whereas Brian Jennings has served proudly and tirelessly on multiple committees, including the Special Ed Parent Advisory Committee, Friends, which is also Friends of Different Learners Committee, the Finance Committee, as well as the Birmingham Youth Assistant Big Brother Program. And whereas Brian Jennings has played an integral role in the hiring of the Superintendent. And whereas Brian Jennings has served our community as treasurer. And whereas Brian Jennings was attentive to every detail with his experience as a builder and developer, as well as an assistant football coach and a previous PTA Vice President. And whereas Brian Jennings has represented the Birmingham Public Schools Community Service since January of 9th of 2017 alongside his wife, Nadine, and their four children as a dedicated father, husband, and finally, wherefore it be resolved that our dear Brian Jennings, we want to say that we appreciate you more than you know. On behalf of the entire school board, we offer our congratulations and Brian, we thank you. You are going to be greatly missed. God bless you, Brian, and thank you for your service.
Listen, guys. It's been my pleasure. I want to tell you how I feel about you when we're in session. I'm going to be the guy that's up on the podium. So I have a lot to say in terms of how great my trustees have been, but we have to get on to business, but I appreciate everything. I appreciate everybody I've met, all the team workers, all the you know, the people that we've worked with. It's been a pleasure. Okay? So I'm going to come up in your board meeting when we're all together in the boardroom. And if you give me three minutes, I think I can do it. I think I can explain how I feel about you guys.
And Brian, we're going to do a virtual hug right after that, okay? Definitely.
It's a bittersweet day, I got to tell you. It is. All you guys, all you guys have been such a pleasure to work with, the team that's there. It's just been great. But I want to make sure that people know, I wanted to see you in person so I can look at you and look at everybody and say, hey, let me tell you about each one of you and people that have become a for us and after us. So thank you so much for that. That's just, it's one of the greatest things. And to serve your community, they put your trust in you. To do that is immeasurable.
So Lori, I'm going to second that motion that you just read. And Trustees, we will save our comments over to the Board Comments or Requests. But all those in favors of this resolution, let's give a big round of applause for Brian, please.
Please say aye.
Brian, this is all about you, hon. Okay, so with that, Dr. Heisch, I will turn it over to you for the remaining six recognitions.
Thank you very much. And we do have quite a few students for you to acknowledge and recognize tonight. So we have a PowerPoint presentation since we can't be live. And we have some information to share about all of our recognizes, I guess we should say. So this first group is from the MSBOA All-State Musical Ensembles. And every year, students from across the state compete through an audition to earn a seat in the All-State Ensemble through the Michigan School Band and Orchestra Association. This year, our BPS students submitted video auditions in the fall and were selected among the 1,466 applicants from across the state. Normally, these top musicians from across the state will come together for three days to practice and perform with a master clinician at the Michigan Music Conference in January. Understandably, it's been canceled for this year. Regardless, this is a wonderful accomplishment and we'd like to recognize our students' amazing talents and hard work. Our next group is from the Michigan Thespian Festival called GPAC, G-P-A-C recognitions. The Virtual Michigan Thespian Festival brought together students and teachers from across Michigan. And while it was virtual, it still retained all of the elements of the live festival. Main stage performances, workshops, individual event competitions, scholarships, and several keynote addresses and panelists from Broadway professionals. Grove students competed in the individual events known as the Thespies with 21 entries. These events are adjudicated by three professionals or university professors with expertise in a particular category. Our students were coached and directed by Mr. John Rutherford, the Director of Theater at WE Groves High School, but had to figure out how to record, present, and perform for the virtual format all on their own. This slide indicates those students with the superior rating, the highest possible. Congratulations for all the students listed. And then on the next slide, congratulations to all our students listed as excellent, the second highest rating possible. And on Slide number four, in addition to the individual events, Alexis Richardson participated in both college scholarships and Thespian Scholarship Auditions. There are only 10 Thespian Scholarships given out, and Alexis received one of those scholarships. It's a huge honor and very exciting. The amount of the scholarship is $500, but the prestige is more meaningful for this distinction. In addition, Alexis was offered scholarships from eight different universities totaling over $200,000. Congratulations, Alexis. We also had a state champion in women's cross-country this year. So this is Audrey Datamique. And congratulations to her. She finished her high school cross-country career by winning the MHSAA Division One Individual State Championship. Audrey's record this year was unblemished in that she won every dual meet and invitational race that she entered with one exception. And that exception was a Blue Jay Invitational where Audrey finished second to Julia Flynn, an elite runner from Traverse City. Audrey got a second chance to compete with a similarly talented Julia Flynn in the state meet, and this time Audrey emerged as a winner. Competing at MIS in Jackson, Michigan, Audrey competed the 5K championship race in 17 minutes and 46 seconds. Audrey has been a multi-year captain of her team and has mentored, led, and inspired her teammates. Congratulations, Audrey. Our next slide shows you some members of the Groves Debate Team who were the state varsity champions. The Groves Varsity Debate Team won its seventh state varsity debate championship this weekend, December 11th and 12th. And this again was the first virtual state tournament held by the Michigan Interscholastic Forensic Association. Ben and Jonah posted a perfect 5-0 record in the preliminary debates before defeating Detroit Country Day on a 3-0 decision in the final round. Congratulations to the Grove students who competed and to the entire team. On this slide, you see the members of the Seehold Debate Team in the novice state championships. And the Seehold novice team of Erica and Luke qualified for the semifinals, one of the top four teams, and eventually made it to the finals and ultimately won the Public Forum Novice State Championship. Congratulations to the entire Seehold Debate Team, especially all who competed in the state tournament. So next, we're going to honor some football players from Groves and from Seehold that won different awards through the course of the year. On our slide here, we have the Groves Football OAA All-Association Honors. And from Groves Football OAA All-Association Honors were given to Kyle Coleman, Jackson Tinsley, Ben Simmons, Jaden Mangum, Logan Flaherty, and Joe Hess. Congratulations to them. Next are Seehold Honors winners from their football program. And Seehold this year had nine players earning all-league honors, and they're listed on the slide. Kayden, Will, and Jake also made numerous all-region teams recognized by groups like the Detroit News, the Detroit Free Press, MLive, My Prep Zone, and the Coaches Association. Seehold also had two players recently commit to playing college football. Kayden is going to Central Michigan and Jake is going to Butler. We're currently waiting on four others for their college football choices. Caleb, Will, Jackson, and Jack are all waiting to make their final decisions. They say that if all six players get the opportunity to play college football, this would be the most player since 2013 to get to the next level. And our last recognition for this evening is a recognition of giving back. The young gentleman you see pictured there is Jack Genslinger. He's a 10th grader at Seehold High School, and he spent a couple of days in the hospital this year. While Jack was in the hospital and he found out that during COVID, toys and games can't be reused or shared. So he organized and collected new games and Legos and then delivered them to local hospitals so students could use them. We are so impressed with Jack and his efforts to help children in the hospital. This was not a school-related project, but we thought it was outstanding enough to mention in our recognitions. And that concludes our recognitions for the evening.
Thank you, George. God, that was all terrific. It puts such a smile on our faces. It really does. Next on the agenda is a five-minute recess. However, I'm going to think that we're only 18 minutes into the meeting, trustees. If you're okay, I'm going to keep going then and no need to break. The next order of business is under Business Services. Our first report is our year-end audit report. Jim, I'll tee it up to you first if you'd like me to, then you can introduce Donna. Is Kristen too or just you, Donna?
I'm just me tonight.
So Jim, do you want to tee it up or should I just turn it over to Donna?
Thanks. I'll tee it up. Sorry, I was having trouble finding you. All right. Thank you. Tonight, we do have Donna Hanson here with us to present the audit. The audit is an annual audit of our financial statements, our internal controls. And first of all, it takes a lot of work throughout the district. Anybody that touches anything financial or has internal controls is really a part of the audit because it really takes everybody to follow policies, procedures, guidelines, to make the audit work. And I especially want to thank the Business Office. And in particular, this year, because we had Inez Thornton, who was playing several roles throughout the spring. Of course, COVID was there. Then we also had Donna Esper, who was playing several roles also. And then we were fortunate to hire Debbie and Cody. Cody, who's my admin assistant, and Debbie Simmons, who is the Assistant Finance Director. The four of them and everybody else really played a huge part in making this audit successful and keeping the district running. So I can't thank them enough. I can't thank everybody in the Business Office enough. So with that, I will turn over to Donna. I would say that Donna and Chris Gek, who's not here tonight, you know, they play a part throughout the year. It's not only audit time that we see them. We call Donna and Chris often throughout the year. We ask them for advice. You know, and they really help us through some issues. Of course, you do want to go to your auditors. They're the people that are going to come in and check what you did. So it's always comforting to work with them, and they're always very helpful. So with that, I'll turn over to Donna.
Great. Thank you very much. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Mrs. Whitman, Dr. Heich, Board Trustees, thank you for the time tonight to report on the audit results for the June 30th, 2020 audit. I'm going to flip to the next page. Here we go. We met with the Audit Committee last month and went through the financial statements, the federal programs report, and the end-of-audit letter correspondence to the Board of Education in detail. What I'm going to cover for you tonight is the graphical presentation of those audit results. I'm pleased to report that we have issued an unmodified opinion on the district's financial statements as of June 30th, 2020. We audit those financial statements in accordance with governmental auditing standards as well as generally accepted accounting principles. We noted no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies to report, so that's good news. You know, I do want to highlight the fact that, you know, as we well know, 2020, the school year, as well as today, has not been a normal year. When the shutdown occurred in March, many of the Business Office operations moved to a remote environment. And we had to evaluate things related to internal controls, processes, procedures prior to the shutdown and then post-shutdown as well. So, you know, we can note that the district was very diligent in ensuring that all those processes and important controls stayed in place. We have also issued an unmodified opinion on the federal programs audit or the single audit. The district is in compliance with the federal guidelines. The major program we were required to test was the Special Education Cluster or the IDEA program. Birmingham continues to be a low-risk auditee, and that really speaks to a historical track record of positive audit results in the federal program area. Going to cover just some condensed highlights from the audit results that are detailed in your financial statements. The first slide here is the governmental funds balance sheet. It highlights the two major governmental funds reported in the district's statements this year. The General Fund, which will always be a major fund for the district, but then also the 2020 Building and Site Construction Fund. The non-major governmental fund is made up of all the other funds of the district. This would include the Special Revenue Fund, such as Cafeteria, the Autistic Center, Early Childhood Fund, and then as well as your Debt Service Funds and the other non-major capital projects funds. Focusing first on assets, this is in thousands here. So assets totaled $35 million approximately as of the end of the school year. Liabilities around $15.3 million. And the total fund balance at June 30th was almost $20 million as of the end of the year. The next graph here details the revenue and expenditure side of the activity for the year. Again, broken down by the major and non-major funds. Focusing specifically on the General Fund revenue, in the General Fund, approximated around $123 million for the year. And total expenditures, around $122 million for the year. The net change to the district's fund balance as a result of revenues exceeding expenditures by approximately $1 million increased fund balance as of the end of the year to $19.9 approximately as of year end. The item to note in the Building and Site Fund is this other financing sources. This is the bond issuance that occurred from the voter-approved bond debt. And there was limited activity for the year, but you see those proceeds coming into that fund this year.
Donna, I'm sorry. Quick question. You're saying millions, but this says in thousands at the top of the sheet.
Yes. It's in thousands because the thousands are not included. So if you look at the revenue, that's $122 million because of those three zeros, none.
Okay, got it. Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Very good. The next graph details the general fund budget-to-actual comparison as of June 30th. And it details the final amended budget the district finalized right before the end of the year. And as a reminder, at that time, in the state, districts were being told to expect approximately $650 to $700 per pupil funding cuts at that time. And the district did properly adjust accordingly and amend the budget to reflect a $650 per pupil budget reduction for the June 30th year. After the end of the year, the ultimate cut per pupil was $175 per pupil. And you can see that resulting variance here. That was clearly information districts did not know. Luckily, the financial situation of the state was better than originally projected, which only resulted in a $175 per pupil cut rather than the worst-case scenario. And then this also just reflects that total final budget compared to actual, and the variance column here. Now, looking at general fund revenues and also expenditures on some further slides, just broken down by the components. In general fund revenue, this is reflected by source. And it details the source of those specific funds the district receives. So local and transfers, this would be property tax revenue, around 46% of all revenues of the district. And state source funding, approximately 41%. Those two components make up the bulk of the district's funding, which totaled, again, $123 million approximately for the year. Another look at revenue is broken down here by looking at the true revenue from your foundation allowance. So the foundation allowance is the total guaranteed amount the district receives on a per-pupil basis. Total foundation allowance from the state source revenue was 36%. And foundation allowance from local or property tax revenue was 43%. This graph also details the breakdown of the district's per-pupil foundation allowance, which totals $12,284 per pupil. And what portion is the hold harmless property taxes, non-homestead property taxes, and that state source piece the district receives in state aid. Total foundation allowance makes up, you know, around 79%, 80% of the total general fund revenue the district receives. The other state and local revenue would be other state categorical funding or local source revenues. Now, moving into expenditures, this details general fund expenditures by function, or we consider this by almost department level. Instruction and instructional support of almost 81% makes up the vast majority, of course, of the district's budget. You know, total expenditures of approximately $122 million for the year. And again, 81% approximately is instruction and instructional support. The other supporting expenditure areas are listed here. And the largest of that would be your operations, maintenance, and security piece, around 5.5%. Again, looking at expenditures, but slicing those expenditures a different way, this would be by object. This details those expenditures, components of salaries, benefits. And then also, we include in here is a breakdown of the restricted retirement benefits. Salaries, benefits, and restricted retirement benefits make up around 85% of, you know, every dollar the district spends. And to highlight that restricted retirement, those are funds that the state provides to the district that the district records as revenue, but you have no ability to spend those dollars on anything else but, you know, remitting those back into the retirement system. So essentially, the district's serving as an agent in that capacity. But that is deemed one of the employee benefit categories of the district. In looking further at that retirement funding, this is a historical representation of the district's this is a historical representation of the district's funding into the MIPSers program, a historical analysis of over the past 10 years. Focusing on 2020, total revenues submitted to the MIPSers program, that multi-employer pension program, approximated around $26.2 million for the year approximately. This graph is broken down by the blue portion here, which represents the district's burden essentially to fund this MIPSers program. And then this orange component here, and that orange component is that state sourced that comes directly into the district, you remit it into the system. One item to note that's very apparent here, so total contributions of covered payroll, or that qualified payroll, into the system is around 39.61% of covered payroll. About 12% of that is funded by the state, but the rest of that, around 27%, is the district's responsibility to pay. You know, in looking back years, you know, back to 2011, you can see that that ratio was about half, almost, of that amount. And so the amount that districts are required to remit into the system continues to tick up each year. Next year, or 2021, that is expected to go from 27% to 28%. And we think of how much of the district's expenditures is payroll. It is 1% makes a significant difference. And then this highlights a more global picture of that multi-employer pension plan. A few years ago, because of new accounting standards that were put in place, GASB 68 and GASB 75, districts became required to report their proportionate share of the underfunded liability in that pension plan on the books of the district, not on the funds, but on the full accrual level reporting the district does. For the pension plan, the total unfunded liability as of June 30th, 2020 was approximately $33 billion. Birmingham's allocable portion of that was approximately 70.765%, which amounts to around $253 million. The retiree healthcare portion of that, or the OPAB liability, had the same, you know, rough allocation there, proportionate share. But that, that plan is around $7 billion unfunded at the end of the year. And so the total unfunded liabilities allocated to Birmingham was around $308 million. Now, moving to a discussion on fund balance. Fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and other influential rates, this highlights those. For Birmingham, at the end of the year, June 30th, 2020, the unassigned fund balance for the district was around 8.6%. But the assigned, non-spendable, and committed, so those are the categories of that fund balance, around 7.7% with the total fund balances at the end of the year, around 16.3%. You know, for comparison purposes, the state average foundation as a percentage of expenditures for 2019 was around 14.2%. So you're a little above that state average. But, you know, as a reminder, it's probably more apparent than ever for 2020 how important fund balance is. When you, you know, as a district, were facing $650 to $700 per pupil cuts as of June 30th, you know, that fund balance was very important for you to be able to maintain your operations and gives you the time to make decisions as well. And then the next graph details, you know, one of the challenges facing many districts in the state. Birmingham has had, since 2013, a trend of declining enrollment. This is something we have seen, you know, across the state due to, you know, several factors. You know, one in particular is the reduced birth rate in the state, as well as there continues to be, you know, competition with charter schools or private schools, you know, in, you know, looking for additional students as well and pulling them out of the public education system. But the declining enrollment is very important because that's the other side of your funding formula. You receive your foundation allowance on a per pupil basis. When your, your per pupil, your pupils are, you know, reducing, and now this year coupled that with a cut in funding, you really got it from both sides for 2020. I just wanted to comment briefly, you know, with regards to, you know, with the current environment right now, the continued uncertainty in public education funding. There was a special revenue estimating conference in August. We are anxiously awaiting next month, in January, there will be an additional revenue estimating conference. And really what is communicated at that time is what the state of the financial position is of the state and of the school aid fund. And that really determines if there is going to be additional impacts on the per pupil funding that the district receives. So, you know, as long as this, the impact of the pandemic continues on and we see businesses shut down, it does have a direct effect on the revenues the state receives. And, you know, how that, you know, translates to the impacts to Birmingham and other districts in the state, we will be hearing more in January. It is important to note that, you know, for the, you know, June 30th, 2020 year, the state did utilize, you know, coronavirus relief funds, federal money, to fill the gap in the, in the school aid fund in order to keep funding levels the way they are and only have the, you know, $175 per pupil cut that districts absorbed. So, you know, it will be very telling when it comes to January, what the information we see and how that impacts districts. Also, you know, districts have received, and, you know, quite a bit of funding with regards to, you know, flowing from the federal government, really not seen since the Great Recession. So those of you around 10 years ago, all of the funding that was received at that time. But, you know, it's important to note that, you know, on one hand, the state cut, you know, per pupil funding by $175 per pupil. But then, you know, the district did receive funding to try to offset that with federal dollars. But those federal dollars have strings attached to them. They can only be spent on certain allowable things. And in particular, the coronavirus relief funds, which is on the next graph. You know, the district received around almost $2.9 million of CFR money. And, you know, we've been, you know, working with the business office and, you know, going through and, you know, deciphering the regulations that have come out since this money came out to ensure that, you know, Birmingham and districts are spending those dollars on allowable costs in accordance with those regulations. And then lastly, just wanted to comment on GASB 84. This is another governmental accounting standard. This standard was deferred, actually, when the pandemic hit. A lot of the accounting standards were deferred for a year. So GASB 84 will be a standard that is required to be implemented as of June 30th, 2021. And this is a standard that establishes the criteria for what is a fiduciary fund. So that would be those student group and activity accounts that the district has, you know, historically been the agent for, or the fiduciary for those funds. And so we've been working with the business office on those standards as well. I want to take a moment just to recap. Great audit results. It's still uncertain times right now, but, you know, positive audit results. And, you know, ahead, next year, and looking at, you know, the funding and the federal grant dollars the district received, we've already given the business office their heads up that, you know, your federal grant audit will be much more robust than probably you've had in the past few years as a result of that. But we want to thank you for the opportunity to serve Birmingham and serve the business office. I know Jim Larson and, you know, the business office team prepare and work hard, as Jim had mentioned, to ensure that the district is ready for audits and that it goes smoothly. So, thank you.
Donna, a quick question. You mentioned special education earlier. Can you just clarify for me, and I apologize if I don't, I didn't, if I missed this. What are they looking for in auditing special education?
Okay, so that's, it's not auditing the special education, you know, all activity. It's auditing the funds that the district receives from the special education cluster grant. And so in looking at that grant, there's many different compliance requirements that we ensure that, you know, not just the dollars are accounted for, but that the program compliance requirements are being adhered to properly. So that involves many different things. It involves certainly, you know, entrenching and interviewing your special education director and understanding the processes and procedures they have in place to ensure they are complying with the rules, making sure the students being served, are the qualifying students being served, as well as those teachers and their payroll are properly being charged.
And as a result of the pandemic, do we expect any impact on that?
There's been lots of different impacts with regards to the federal dollars, not just the new federal dollars the district receives, but also the existing grant dollars. A lot of the rules under those grant agreements have either been waived or changed for districts to be able to adhere to, you know, those in a remote environment. And so we do expect there are going to be, you know, certain changes of various grants as a result of the situation.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you for the time. Thank you, Donna.
You know, I wanted to just thank Donna again, then also thank Chris Gack. They split time. Chris Gack came in this afternoon and met with all the unions and the business office staff to go through the audit at 2:15 this afternoon. So, you know, I thank him for doing that. I think it's important for our unions or our staff to understand the financials in the audit. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so thank you again, Donna, and to Chris. So Jim, we'll dovetail back to you now for several reports and two resolutions with regard to some bond work that we talked about last week.
Yes, thank you. Yes, last week, we went over a presentation of the bond work that we've been working on, then also teed up a couple of resolutions. The first resolution that we have is roofing. This is, we work with a, there's several ways to do a bond. You can work with an architect, construction manager, and go through them and do all the work. What we do for our roofs, parking lots, we go through a prime contractor, which means they do all the architect work and the construction manager work on it. So what you do is you're essentially reducing your fees, and you have somebody directly over it. We've worked with Structured Tech, who has worked with us on the 2015 bond, and they've carried over. So they, they have reviewed all of our roofs. They have timelines for when roofs should be replaced. So when we did our 10-year capital plan, we put those roofs in the priority order. And with that, we looked at Berkshire Middle School. We looked at Beverly and Greenfield with having portions of the roofs that needed replacing the soonest. So these, these are first, the first is some of the roofing bids that you'll see over the next several years in this bond. The Berkshire is awarded to Royal West Roofing, and then Beverly and Greenfield are to William Mollner Roofing. And overall, the project is with a contingency of 7.5%. The budget was at $1,417.38. The total actual bids with contingency is at $1,432,876. So we are over budget slightly by about $16,000. It's a pretty close percentage, and again, that 7.5% represents almost $100,000. So if you don't use a contingency, that would come back to the bottom.
Hey, Jim? I was just wondering, the reason that we have two different companies is because two different companies do two different things? Is that correct?
No, not really. What we did is, we were thinking that we would bid it out as one package. And possibly, somebody would look at it and say, you know, I'm out there, I'm doing the work. I'll just take all three and get some sort of discount. That really didn't work because when we talked to, we actually had eight roofing contractors bid on this. And they said, they really, it's not a savings to them because they have to, you know, stage at one site, go to the next site, stage, and go to the following site. So, and then also for their staffing, it's not really like they go from one roof to the next. They probably have staff at both areas. So the, so the capacity of the companies dictated what they bid it, they bid, I'm sorry.
Okay, so trustees, do I have a motion for the resolution for the contracts for roofing replacement at Berkshire, Beverly, and Greenfield?
I'm moved. Second.
Second. Oh, sorry, second. Agree.
Trustees, any other comments or questions for Jim? I know, again, we covered this in detail last week.
Hey, Kim, could I have one more question with Jim?
Sure, absolutely.
Jim, are all the, are all the roofs in Birmingham the same, are they the same?
Same.
They're not materials?
No, we have different materials. I mean, you have Duralast roofs, you know, the flat roofs, you have, you know, shingle roofs. So it varies by building and the surface. I mean, if it's flat versus a incline.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustees, any other questions or comments? Okay, so all those in favor for the resolution for the contracts for roofing replacement for a total of $1,432,870, sorry, $1,432,876, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, Joan, allow the minutes to show the roofing resolution passes seven to zero. Okay, Jim, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, thank you. The next item that we have resolution is for press box at Groves and Sea Home, then also the bleachers at Groves. So this project really started, I would say, back in December of 2018. At that time, we had some bond proceeds remaining in the 2015-18 bond. At that time, we were looking at doing some renovations out at Grove Stadium. And some of that was, you know, to enhance the bleachers, put in some, not, not press box, but ticket booth, then also put in decorative fencing. So when we started looking at this, we delayed that because of the 2020 bond. So we really looked at saying, if we put some of these items in, we would have to disturb them or we'd have to replace them. So to be good stewards of the money, the taxpayers' money, we decided to wait for the 2020 bond. So some of the money that is in, what I'll present to you in a second, is from the 2015-18 bond. We had about $1.7 million remaining from that bond that we were putting towards improvement at Groves, and then also at the stadium. Then um, so with that, we moved some of the work to the twenty twenty bond. And overall, the, this project was budgeted at one million five sixty-eight seventy-eight. The total uh, project cost with a ten percent contingency is at two million sixty-seven two forty-four. So we are over budget by four ninety-nine one sixty-six. And that is with a one hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollar contingency.
And I know we talked about this last week. So when you're budgeting originally, and then now with these um, resolutions, we have these contingencies, whether it's seven point five or ten percent or whatever you feel is fair. Um, I guess I just want to make sure for the community's perspective, they understand that the budget, when you did a line item budget, let's say on our Excel spreadsheet, that did not have the contingency in it, correct? That contingency was a total, well, call like the last line item for everything.
Yeah, that, that's a great point because what we did is we had a owner's contingency. And um, when we proposed the bond, the uh, the board at the time actually asked a lot of questions because we had originally uh, as stated in Mount, that was a pretty tight budget. And uh, the board at that time asked about what if you have overruns? What if uh, you know, you don't come in on budget? So we built in a contingency um, of, well, it was about five percent contingency overall on the, a total bond for items like this. And also I do want to go back to, we have the one point seven from the uh, two thousand fifteen eighteen bond. A lot of that money was um, to be spent on these projects that um, you know, we, we felt it was better to wait. Uh, because we couldn't really put in the decorative fence and then go in and put the bleachers. So you really have to do it in a sequence. You have to do everything inside before you do the outside. So when we originally looked at it before with uh, the previous bonds, funds, we were just really looking at something for an appeal. Really to give it something until we could do more um, in the future. And that time to do more is now.
Jim, did that, did that affect any of our costs?
Uh, I'm sorry, um, as far as.
Overall costs, you know, putting it in sequence and having to have um.
You know, that, that's a great question. That's a great question. Actually, um, you know, it probably adds a little bit of inflation to it. Because if we would have done it a year or two ago, you maybe uh, you know, if we put the decorative fencing up, it could have been three to five percent less. Uh, just because of inflation. Um, but doing it as a package makes a lot more sense and to do it from the inside out. So I think this is the right way to do it. Um, I'm, you know, we were, we were trying to do a lot in a hurry before. Um, I think it's better to step back and also get a lot more input. Throughout this process, we worked with coaches, staff. Um, you know, we have a lot of participation and, you know, as I had stated at the study session, and we're actually fortunate in a way to be on Zoom. Because you have people all over the district. Instead of having to pull them in for a face-to-face, they're able to, oh, got a two o'clock meeting, you know, it's one fifty-nine, gotta jump on Zoom. So we've had great participation. Um, and some of the reasons for the cost too, um, being over budget is once you start planning it. You know, you know, maybe we were gonna do a um, originally, I would say that we were gonna do like uh, pebbles underneath the bleachers or um. Kind of wood chips, you know, then we started looking at, we're going, no, we're not doing wood chips underneath the bleachers. Because um, if you remember the pictures, we want to put cement. It's going to be a place where people walk. It's going to be a really a showplace underneath the bleachers where people can walk back and forth. Um, and you're not gonna have to worry it's gonna be lit. So some of those um, I guess, details were not totally flushed out. And then once you start designing it, you know, you don't want, you want to let people think, you know, big. You want them to think, you know, you want something that you're proud of. And I believe that's what we have. So, and we've done it the right way.
But, but then that's really good that we have all um, stakeholders and all perspectives included in this then.
Absolutely. That, that was um, that's a, really a huge point of this bond throughout. We've had participation. We'll continue to have participation throughout.
Jim, I have a question. One of the things that you did was prioritize a whole bunch of projects. So like priority one, priority two, priority three. And I know that wasn't the language you used, but you understand what I'm talking about. So my question is, what gets booted off the list? Or moves even further down when something like this happens? Because while I appreciate that this reflects a great deal of stakeholder input. It does worry me that we upgraded all these materials for um, this particular site, but something's gotta, something's gotta give down way, right?
Uh, no, that's a good question. Really, um, you know, you look at the one point seven from the previous bond. So we have that. Uh, we also have some other uh, pots of money that are not necessarily in the bond that uh, for a center-based program, if the annex goes over budget, we're able to use funds from the center-based program. And we also have the owner's contingency. So um, you know, and, you know, discussing with uh, Dr. Heitch. I mean, he's fully aware of bond process. That was his first question. Hey, if you're over budget on your first project out of the gate, what's it gonna look like down the road? Um, it is a fair question, but we do have uh, comfort in knowing we have that one point seven from the previous bond. And then we're also pulling some projects up that will save some money. Um, like you will see the auxiliary gyms at Sea Home. We're pulling that up uh, two to three years to save on um, the cost increases on that. So we're able to do some things to save money on some projects down uh, in the future and not jeopardize projects at the end. And, and, and. Is that helpful? Yeah, Adrian, what I wanted to make sure of is that we weren't overspending the Grove's outdoor budget from the twenty twenty bond issue. And we did not exceed that level, but we supplemented those dollars with the fifteen eighteen bond. So there's, there's no extra money flowing out of the twenty twenty bond that would impact later projects, if that helps.
That helps. Thank you.
Thank you, George.
Adrian, also just so you know, we did discuss um, this in the finance committee meeting. I had similar concerns that we were starting out high on everything and that it would be a trend. But Jim gave me the same answer he gave you, which um, is, you know, that we do have some money right now. But it is something that we're gonna continue to look at and the finance committee will review it every month as well.
Trustees, anything else? Okay, um, is there a motion for the contracts for the Grove bleachers and press boxes for both Groves and Sea Home, please?
So moved.
Moved by Azure Looney.
Second.
Seconded by Secretary Rast. Any other questions, comments? Okay, so just in the spirit of because we are spending ma- bond money and so that Joan can hear um, all of us, it's really tough on Zoom. I'm gonna do a roll call vote just again, so we can, we're very clear with um, uh, who's saying what, because again, it gets kind of tough. So Vice President Azure Looney, how do you vote on this resolution?
Support.
Secretary Rast?
Support.
Uh, Treasurer Hokamar?
Support.
Trustee Jennings?
Support.
Trustee McKinney?
Support.
Trustee Young?
Support.
And then President Whitman, I do support. So Joan, this resolution passes seven to zero.
Thank you.
Hey Jim, I think that's it from your section.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so before we get into this, for the community uh, who is watching, today is Tuesday, December fifteenth, two thousand twenty. You are joining the Birmingham Public Schools regular board, board meeting. Uh, our next agenda item is the superintendent's report. Again, we are going to uh, continue our discussion on the return to learn uh, presentation. So George, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have two pieces to share with you tonight. One is an overview of our uh, safety dashboard and framework that we have continued to. Synthesize the information that we receive from HAB and if, and uh, and other collaborative partners within the district. So we want to walk you through that. Uh, then we have some recommendations for the return to school plan uh, about getting students uh, K through twelve and special education uh, back in school. So we'll start with the safety dashboard and framework and then uh, work our way through the conversation there. So this first slide talks about our, our timeline to return. Uh, we are recommending the pre-K and K through eight and uh, BCS. Return on Monday, January the eleventh uh, to a hybrid environment. And if, if you recall, we have been talking about hybrid in two different formats. Our elementary schools are in an AM and PM uh, half-day format. We are suggesting that our sixth through uh, twelve students when they return. Uh, go into a hybrid that is an alternate day hybrid, a full day hybrid. Uh, we believe that offers some instructional opportunity for students that you don't get in a half-day. Uh, it also um, provides some additional social um, opportunity for students within uh, safe social distancing. Um, and we, it provides a little bit better continuity of learning for us. Uh, so in addition to that, we're recommending that our ninth through twelfth grade students return on Tuesday. Uh, January uh, nineteenth. Uh, we don't have a lot of anxiety over this, but I do want to mention that the uh, the state of Michigan still is under um. Guidelines to not have high school um, instruction. That order goes through December twentieth. Uh, we are expecting uh, that to be different when we come back to school and we are um, expecting to start high school on Tuesday, January nineteenth. We'll continue to watch that age band data and the trends uh, in our staffing capacity, but we believe we're on the, on the right trend uh, for that to happen. So January eleven, uh, pre-K, K through eight and BCS hybrid return. Uh, January nineteenth, uh, ninth through twelfth grade hybrid return. And you can also see that we have special education returns slated for January eleventh. Um, in January nineteenth. Uh, and those dates line up with the grade levels that those um, comprehensive programs line up with also. We are recommending a schedule shift. Um, we're recommending that our cohorts be full-day cohorts, an A cohort and a B cohort. Um, we're recommending that because we believe it increases instructional time. Uh, we've got high school students that need to be able to align with county-wide programs, particularly in vocational and career and technical education. Um, this provides us a solution to some of our challenges in, in transportation. It provides us a consistency in scheduling. So when we do uh, have the ability to go back uh, full face-to-face as vaccinations are rolled out and uh, the diseases mitigated. It makes that long-term transition planning uh, a little bit easier. Uh, we are discussing cohort A attending on Monday and Thursday. Cohort B attending Tuesday and Friday. Uh, we're suggesting Wednesday would be an alternating in-person day. Um, there is still ongoing conversation about what Wednesday should look like. Uh, we do have a little bit of anxiety that thirty-three. Um, percent of our families will still be in a full virtual environment. Uh, we want to ensure that we've got systems in place to make sure that we're adequately serving those students through all this transition too. That may require a little bit more conversation, but this is what we're presenting uh, for your consideration and approval today. And when and if and how we approve this, we will continue to engage in conversation with all of our stakeholders uh, to make sure we've got the best opportunities in place for kids. Uh, we made a commitment in the fall that we were gonna wait through March twelfth um, around families choosing between a hybrid program and a Birmingham Virtual Academy. Uh, we have been able to secure more staffing for the uh, Birmingham Virtual, Virtual Academy. I want to thank Dean uh, for his efforts and Mbika for their efforts on that. Um, we've hired three. Uh, we may find another one or two that can help us. That capacity in a virtual academy right now is extremely tight. We have a waiting list for that. Um, we are assuming that we may have more requests for that depending on how the uh, trend lines go in a, in the, in the community around the virus. We want to meet as many elementary needs with BVA as we can, uh, but we're not gonna make any commitments to doing that until we have staff in place. Uh, our middle and high school students always have the opportunity to livestream into classes as a, as a remote alternative. Um, and anybody that has concerns regarding their options, uh, we want them to contact the building administrators because they're closest to the issue. They know their families better and they can review the options um, and help identify the right uh, platform for their students. Um, so we know that this is a change. We feel like we're out in front of it far enough now. We've got a month uh, for families to identify and make some adjustments. Uh, but we, we will be reviewing the data every Monday and we'll provide an update on the website. If a status change is indicated. Meaning that, that we have a flare-up and we're in hybrid and we have to go back to virtual or we're in virtual and are sliding back to hybrid. Um, we feel like we need a minimum of three days in order to communicate and make that transition uh, as confident, confidently and comfortably as possible with our staff and our students. So we've got four status points now. We're currently at the far, uh, I'm, I'm looking at as far right. You may not be, but it's all virtual. And again, a reminder, we're in that because we hit that status within our framework uh, that required us uh, to go all virtual based on the signs around us. We are seeing trend data that makes us very confident uh, that on January eleventh, unless there's another terrible spike over the holiday. Uh, that will be in a, a hybrid model, either restrictive or less restrictive. Um, and I have great hope that at some point, we're gonna be full face in person. Uh, as we get through the spring and into the uh, late spring, early summer area. Uh, we've had a lot of good feedback around this framework uh, between the Health Advisory Board and our BEA leadership. Um, we are focused on returning our students to the classroom and keeping students and staff safe and in school as a priority. So we have updated our data points to identify risks to our students. Uh, is staff safety at the cohort, classroom, and grade and building levels. So I, I want to be really clear, when we re-enter this environment in, in a hybrid face-to-face, um, we are gonna look to do the least. Uh, pulling out of that environment as possible. So it, it may be that you will see a classroom that has to go into an isolation or quarantine situation. Or you may see a grade level or heaven forbid, even a building, uh, but not the whole district. So we're looking at it from the smallest unit up to the largest with the district being the largest. Our goal is to get out of virtual, uh, get into hybrid and stay in some kind of hybrid and face-to-face. So our updates are around the age band data per a hundred thousand. And again, to remind you, we look at those age bands that cover elementary age and age band that covers uh, middle school and an age band that covers our high school students. Uh, we had advice both from HAB and the BEA that it would be wise for us to kind of collapse our adult age bands into one. So we have an idea of if we are facing potential shortages based on infection rates. So we are looking at that now. Uh, we do look at the infection rate to see if it's rising or declining. We look at our specific cases within the district to see if they're spreading. And to see what impact that has on our staffing commit, capacity. And we did remove the Harvard Global metric uh, with a focus. We're focusing more directly on the Oakland County health data provided in our Birmingham Public Schools data. This is all changed. If you can remember back to August and the just, we were all trying to make them, based on the data flow and how little we knew about the data. We know so much more now and we've implemented great uh, precautions within buildings to make them socially distant and to keep staff and students. and students safe. So there are agencies within the state of Michigan that can tell us what to do. The biggest gorilla in the room is the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. Right now, they've said no in-person high school is allowed at all. They would have the opportunity to say no in-person K-12 if they thought things were dire enough. We don't expect them to do that. We look to see if the age band cases are less than thirty-five cases per a hundred thousand and is the infection rate less than one. We know that when that infection rate bounces up over one, that you're increasing the spread within your community. If both those things are no, we would consideration only a level temporary closure pending a spike increase. Are we able to adequately staff our buildings? Right now, we can say yes. But if you remember, when all this flurry hit before Thanksgiving, we did have to close classrooms across the district, particularly in some of our higher need special education rooms. But we saw a trend coming based on the number of adult quarantines that we used. The county gets a grade based on the region that we're in in the state of Michigan from A through E. We're currently in an E status, which is the highest risk you can be at, but we look to see if we're less than E. Are we free of outbreaks in Birmingham Public Schools? And if we do, we're only going to address, like we said earlier, those schools that are affected or those classes in those programs. Do hospitals have the capacity? Are the death rates less than five percent? Is our healthcare capacity strong? Is the county health department able to do the testing and the tracing that they want us to? And is the county case positivity lower than ten percent? Those are the markers that we look for. And to give you a little bit of context, New York Public Schools went back in, came out and went back in and they had all that conversation when their positivity rate was at three percent. You know, we didn't start edging in towards virtual until we were over ten percent. In the last few weeks, we've been between twelve and a half and thirteen and a half percent. So here's your revised data dashboard. These are the things that lead our decision making. We use a lot of data points to try to figure out what the physical health risks are and we want to remain vital. Our other considerations, we are anxious like everybody else about our students' emotional and mental well-being and we want to provide them and families some kind of relief in a right manner and a safe manner. We want to provide a consistency of learning. We want to be able to provide support and growth for students that are struggling with their virtual learning. We want to meet the food and childcare needs and we want to be able to help adults with those challenges they have around supervising students during the at-home learning portion. So these are all our different data considerations. Our three primary drivers again are the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services Safe Start Phase. What phase are we in? Are we A through E? We look weekly at the Oakland County Health Department age band data and community data. So you can see there that those numbers will shift every week. And if you look at the difference in cases from five through nine at twelve per hundred thousand to the fourteen to eighteen high school at forty-one, for a hundred thousand, it's easy to understand why high schools are currently a more restrictive environment. And then we look at our adult infection rate also, what the community is and what the county is. And then all those other pieces are secondary drivers that we take into consideration and they influence our thinking, but they're not a deciding point. You know, what are our staff quarantines and isolations? How many occurrences do we have currently in the system? What's the status of the county? What's our hospitalization rate, death rate, capacity, and then that positivity rate? And then another consideration is how consistent are we for families and students? One of the frustrations that we heard is we were kind of in that yin and yang in November was kind of somebody make a decision and just tell us what it's going to be for a while because we see the infraction rate is going. And again, now just tell us when we can get back to school. That's what we're trying to do today. So we ask yes and no questions around that. You saw the chart on the left-hand side of that. There's no pure number that says you're in. There's no pure number that says you're out. HAB provided us the guidance that we're better to be contextual and just try to figure out the trends lines within the community and what the community can accept and absorb from an infection rate and from a schooling rate to use the contextual data about the importance of students being in school and the importance of face-to-face instructions. So we try to weave all that together into one picture. So again, these are our recommendations for full in-person instruction. You're not going to have very many cases within your age band. We've got that opportunity for less restrictive and less restrictive again means that the elementary level, you could go face to face. We'll have to see how parents feel about that. It would maintain our full day hybrid at the middle and high school. And as you can see, it would start allowing for some after-school clubs and enrichment. And again, we're going to follow the Michigan High School Athletic Association guidelines when it comes to athletics. And then the more restrictive hybrid really has the behavior that we're leaning into now, full six-foot social distancing, PPE required, PK through the post-secondary, all of our safety protocols in place. The difference here is that when you may have had this conversation around hybrid in the early fall, you were talking about a half-day hybrid program and we're now recommending for you a full-day hybrid program. And in the most restrictive environment, we can go into is if we have to go back into all virtual. I do want to bring attention to the fact that we did increase the number of cases per a hundred thousand. It would tip us into all virtual. That number previously was twenty-five. In the first and second iterations of the framework, we've increased that up to thirty-five. And again, we've increased that because of what we know now about the virus and the spread of the virus and because of the contextual information HAB helped provide us. So that concludes the PowerPoint. A couple of things I want to bring to your attention because this needs to be embedded in our return to school kind of resolution. Couple of things, I own the frustration that many people feel within the community and possibly even on the Board of Education over the timing of these conversations because we were working with secondary principals in the morning yesterday and again in the morning today to try to identify what optimizes the time that we have to be with kids in a safe environment and provide the best continuity of learning and the best kind of instructional framework. We still are in conversation within the system of how to best meet the needs of all the kids because we've got two dynamic systems at play. We're going to have a hybrid face-to-face. You're going to have students that on their off-cohort day are live streaming into the class, which takes some attention from us and takes some learning on our behalf as adults. And then we've got, we know from the survey, thirty-three to thirty-five percent of our secondary families that are going to be comfortable live streaming in all the time and not necessarily be a part of face-to-face. So there is anxiety, I've got to acknowledge it to all of you internally, on how we're going to balance and meet all those needs. And we've got to continue that conversation. We think the plan we presented that has full days and alternating days and some kind of fluid on Wednesday, whether that's an all-day cohort of A for week one and all cohort of B on week two, or whether there has to be continued conversation around that day to meet the needs of kids, we're ready to engage in that conversation. But from a contextual standpoint, your building principals helped us design this and they pushed back on us that the half-day model didn't make as much sense at the secondary level as it does at the elementary level. And I was reminded today in a conversation, in a traditional year, if we were all face-to-face, the five or six half-days that we would schedule with our high school students would be our lowest attended days because there's not a high school student in America that can't rationalize missing a half-day of school, right? Because it's only two and a half hours and we're not going to do much. So this full-day model takes some of that desire to not be there off. So at some point, we're going to ask you to vote on this in the next few moments, but we want to answer any and all questions that we can. We want to be able to respond to frustrations and anxieties that you may have about the direction that we're headed.
So trustees, just to be clear, as George indicated, certainly right now, it's open for questions, comments, concerns. When I ask for a motion and a second, I'm specifically looking at the attachment in our board book called the reconfirmation meeting. We'll attach that to a resolution that specifically details that we are voting on a return to in-person hybrid for K through eight students on January eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one, and for nine through twelve students, a return to in-person hybrid on January nineteenth. I'm going to also further, though, George, to clarify that what the trustees will be voting on will be a five full days of school. So cohort A would go on Monday, Thursday, cohort B would go on Tuesday, Friday. And again, what I'm throwing out that we will be voting on is Wednesday would be an all-full-day learning, alternating weeks of cohort A and cohort B, just to be clear.
That is a recommendation that is in the packet that we made after conversation with building administrators. And I'll provide you a little more context along with that. You can vote for that, right? You could go, you could vote for the dates to begin and the full-day hybrid and send us back and say, bring us a different schedule if that was your choice. Or you could reject the whole thing and tell me we're going to have a special meeting in a week and you want different information. So I see those as three options. Like the first option, the best, and we just stay in conversation with everybody in the system to figure out what that needs to look like.
Okay, trust.
A question around virtual. So do we have a plan for families who want to remain virtual for the entire year?
We do. We do. At the secondary level, Nicole, they would be live streaming into the class like the students that are home that day in cohort B. If you're a virtual, you just live stream in every day. They would have a schedule for that.
And then for those who have selected live streaming but haven't actually experienced a simulation, if they chose that they didn't want to live stream, is there any other option? That's the option.
So I'm going to say there is an option until somebody else lights up and tells me that there's not. I think at the secondary level, we would be able to take your son or daughter that didn't like live streaming and get them in either cohort A or cohort B, where you would only be live streaming half the time and you'd be face-to-face half the time.
Okay, thank you. And I will comment that I do think having students in class all day is easier, more convenient than half-day. And I agree with you about attendance. I've heard in the past that schools do have lower attendance on half-days.
But it also seems like this is a little bit fluid for families, that they will have the option to make a change as needed for their children's needs. And that's, I think, optimal.
I think it's just important to that we, if we do decide on this full-day hybrid, that we are going to have to over-communicate because the community has not heard this from us since August. So this is all brand new and I am concerned that people who have been making, you know, changes or planning for what they thought may be a half-day program for middle schoolers, now that's changed. So I appreciate, George, that you, you know, that it's a month away, but I just, I really feel strongly that we are going to have to over-communicate if this is what is voted on tonight because this is something that has not been seen in many months and it's significantly different from what we've been talking about in the past few study sessions and meetings.
So if this passes tonight, I mean, what does this look like for parents starting tomorrow? You know, like, do they have, if they were previously hybrid but don't like this new plan, can they go, you know, like, I guess, what does this look, what does this look like for deciding what you want? To Nicole's point, if they haven't seen live streaming, are they going to have that option before they have to choose one or the other? I'm just trying to figure out what it looks like between now and the holiday break.
You couldn't see me, Adrian, but I was very happy when Mbika came on screen.
So the secondary administrators, if this passes today, would like to send out communication that identifies someone from their building as a point person should parents want to change their option for whether it be in virtual or in person based on this new model. So they wanted to communicate what this new model looks like. Sometimes it comes from the district, but then identifying at the school a point person where someone can make a change in their selection if they need to.
And to trustee McKinney's point, how can parents experience what live streaming looks like to make this decision as informed as possible?
I believe that there was, and Dwight can correct me, I think there were videos that were sent out around live streaming to parents already previously.
Yes, that's correct. Yep, that went out in an emails message to families.
So we can send those.
I was going to say, that can be reset, especially for high school parents, since they'll now have to consider that as well.
Well, to be clear, this was always the option for secondary. Live streaming was always going to be how it happened, whether it happened in a half-day model or a full-day model, correct, Dr. Obison?
That's what I was going to say, is that there is, it allows flexibility for families to be able to choose. If they, if they don't know what it looks like and how it's going to work for their child or children, then they have the option to make a different decision. And I think that's what is going to be helpful.
Right. I just want them to be able to make an informed decision. If you have the flexibility to choose, oh, let's, let's see what, what totally online learning is going to look like because I'm really up for either way, then you should be able to have an idea of what that's going to look like.
And so does this live streaming then still include the students bringing their computers to school?
Potentially, where applicable. That depends on, several meetings ago, I described that I don't think that the overarching option is for students to sit on a computer in Zoom in person all day as well. But there may be applications for that in the classroom if a teacher decides to. And if the technology permits. I mean, there are a few other things, without getting into all the details, there are other things that a teacher would have to have in place in order to do that. So, but it's a possibility. It's an option that's on the table for them.
Okay, thank you. And then I have a sports-related question. So winter one sports has been canceled for middle school students, but we just said that we're following the Michigan High School Association. So why is there a contradiction there?
Well, right now, the MHSAA is shut down also.
Until December twentieth, though, right?
Well, there'd be another decision, but they did cancel their representative council meeting today.
Okay.
SAA, so I think they're waiting for more guidance from the governor's office, too.
Okay, so then if they do agree to go back in, what happens to winter one sports? It's still canceled?
I'm looking for help.
I know, I'm not sure that Rachel's able to.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was struggling to try and unmute myself.
I'm going to give it to you then, Rachel.
Yeah. So I'll just share, it is exactly as George said, they had originally scheduled an updated meeting and. Yeah. So I'll just share it. It is exactly as George said, they had originally scheduled an updated meeting and in fact, I thought there was to be another meeting tomorrow. But what would happen is we will, we we will literally wait to hear MHSAA will make their decision in accordance with the governor or MDHSS, I should say. And then if that green light is given, then we would have to revamp and reexamine what we're doing. But in all honesty, I don't see that happening. And the reason I don't has to do with looking at trying to run the tryouts, the schedules. This is at the high school level, trustee McKinney. That for winter one, I don't see us revisiting that. For middle school, we will have to revisit that at the date and time. We'll be calling an immediate meeting and we've all just literally discussed that as soon as that athletic meeting takes place, the athletic advisory board will then recon again to discuss what's the next step, but we have to wait for them to make their decision first. So we need, the the short answer is we don't know what we don't know, but we know we have to be nimble and that we're going to have to be ready to to meet and to say what makes sense based on what's permitted.
Okay, thank you.
George? George?
Yes, Brian.
Yeah, how staffing?
How what?
How was staffing? How are we doing?
Staffing is staffing is okay. You know, it's not not perfect and not wonderful, but doable. How's that?
George, I actually have a question about that. So it was checked no in the yes, no column on that slide that that staffing was a no. Um, on the new.
Yeah.
Yeah. But then just now, and then earlier in your presentation, you said that right now we have the staff. So can you talk a little bit more about why there's a difference there?
I will. I'm going to ask Ian to pull that back up.
I know there was one slide that it said if no, then that.
The I'm talking about the grid.
Right.
Right.
It's actually on the dashboard.
Right.
Left hand side, blue part.
So so we would say we could have a no check there, Adrian, because of the of the annex where we had to close or a couple of other places. It would be more specific to a unique classroom or a or a unique program rather than system wide. So there there are likely to be adjustments that you we may have to make at the high school to allow some critical staff members to teach live stream. And have other staff members watch students or be with students in their classroom because they're just not ready to come back into that environment. So that would be a no, but it's also a no that we're able to potentially cover for internally.
George, kind of to what Adrian's pointing to, I guess what I'm uncomfortable about with this grid is it seems very subjective. We have several things saying no, and maybe I'm missing something. I mean, we could be having the same conversation next week and then determine that that same information tells us, no, we can't be in school. So I guess I'm looking at wondering what weighs more than other things? Because right now it just seems very subjective.
No, you're absolutely right. If you look on the right hand side of that page at the top, they're called primary drivers. So those are the three big things that we look at. The Department of Health or age band data and whether that's increasing or decreasing or at a real critical level. And then kind of what the infection rate and the trend around the infection rate. And then on the left hand side, those those yellow ones, again, the two about whether the department allows for in-person instruction. And does the age band generally have less than 35 per 100? Those are the the things that carry the most weight of all. And then everything else kind of is a secondary driver and influences it. So we pay attention to it. But we're really driven by those, the primary drivers.
And so you referenced a couple of times if there was an uptick in cases. What? What is an uptick to you?
Well, anything over 35.
Okay.
Is an uptick. So like the 14 to 18, that band still feels pretty hot to me, the high school kids. And if I if I saw the five to nines, Nicole, over the course of a couple of weeks, go from a 12 to a 22 to a 30, anxious then to if I saw that kind of increase.
But George, for example, so these are our primary drivers. And, you know, obviously the MDHHS Safe Start, we have no control over. They move that and, you know, we have to follow suit. The age bands are specific to Oakland County, but then we also have this BPS community number here that we are using. Can you explain that for people who maybe haven't looked at the Oakland County website?
Yep. So the the Oakland County Health Department publishes a COVID dashboard. As part of that dashboard, they have some interactive maps. But you can go and see what the infection rate is in your zip code. But they've also got a map that is unique to every school district in Oakland County. So that that number that says BPS community of 52, it's that on this week that we took at the December 9th data and we clicked on our school district on that interactive map, it showed us that we had an infection rate of 52, I think, for 100,000. So and it gives us, for a while there, the the county looks very similar today, but throughout September and October, you could see places in the county where the virus just kind of burst up and had over 50 like we do now. And and most of us were riding between I would say 25 and 35.
I'm going to just, I just want to jump in with the 52 per 100,000. People may go to that dashboard. They actually Oakland County uses 10,000 per 10,000. It was a little more clear for us to be able to use the per 100,000 and be able to compare other areas. So we just have a quick math formula that we use. I just want people to be clear that when they go to the OC HD, we're using that data, but we're the ones that are doing a quick little math determination to get to these numbers per 100,000.
And then Dr. Haish, the COVID Act Now infection rate. So this is not a number that we previously used at all on our on the dashboard previously. And I don't know, do you want to explain it a little bit? Because first of all, this number has come down significantly in two weeks.
It has.
Started looking at it, it was at 1.02.
Yep.
So just above one. It's now down to 0.85. So as Ann and Dr. Haish and I talked about earlier this week, we're not just going to be looking that at that as a spot in time. So if it goes back up to 1.02, we're not automatically saying kids can't be in school. It's more from a trend perspective. So for example, if I, you know, if I saw this number go up above one slightly, I would be calling Ann and saying, hey, what did it look like though, the last couple of weeks?
Yeah, that's exactly that. That's that's the purpose of this is to have a trend ability to start looking ahead. In the previous metrics, we didn't have a piece that allowed us to do that part. And the COVID Act Now number is a nice number. It's probably the only place that you can find it is through the COVID Act Now, which is why we've utilized a nice, easy number to understand that anything over one would mean that for every person that has a case of COVID, they're spreading it to more than one person. If it's less than one, you know, you're you're going to start to see things go down. So it's an easy number to for people to understand. It again is allowing us to see that trend long term.
But Ann, all of this being said, the one thing that I feel that I need to reiterate, because so many doctors have emailed us about it, and that is the fact that community infection rates are not reflective of what is happening within a school or a district. Because as Oakland County, the state of Michigan, and the federal government have been saying throughout at least the latter part of this pandemic, schools are actually safe. They are very safe compared to other in-person activities that people might engage in. And so I do feel the need to stress that because it's part of why we're not looking at just a few numbers when we are making decisions.
And it was nice to, I'm glad you brought that up to, I think, when you look back at when we closed in November, too, and I look at the metrics that are here, we've had this, we've been when and playing with us and collaborating with people over a period of time to get to this this slide that you're seeing here. So I've had these data numbers that I've looked at over the course of the last six weeks and see correlations between them. It's been nice to have that local data information. And just to your point, Amy, we're able to see the occurrences that are happening in our building. We're able to see that community number, but to also see more direct into our classrooms of where the spreads may be occurring or that they're not have dated a point to to say that, you know, we remain safe in our schools.
Over the past couple of weeks, we've gotten pretty extensive communication from HAB members and they've gone to more public forums to voice their concerns. It was shared that they approved of this new what we're looking at here, this new framework. George, can you just talk to us a little bit about what you mean by that? Like they they saw this and everybody said, okay, or because it just seems like there's been some sort of miscommunication here with what the HAB likes and then what I'm seeing in my inbox and hearing from other people about HAB members posting.
I think that's a fair, fair question to ask and a great opportunity for me to explain the process of how we got here. So we did have a conversation with members from HAB and members of BEA, and that conversation really created the sense that we needed to be not so number driven, but more contextual. And also that the Harvard Global Index might be kind of outdated as a primary determiner of opening and closing. We do have HAB members that are would be more aggressive about having students in school that are that our framework indicates we should and that I'm comfortable with recommending. And we also have HAB members that I don't think I've done a good enough job letting them know that I have heard what they've communicated because they're 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 pretty passionate about the position that schools are the right place for kids. And if the social and emotional decline or social and emotional, lack of socially emotional ability by not having students in school offsets the risk or the lower risk that they they view in the virus. So there, so HAB did not vote on this new framework. They did not all see it and sign off on it. But I felt that we had representative voices from HAB in the kind of the overview and the contextualization of the framework. And I think that we've moved quite a ways in the direction that would make them aware that we're much more sympathetic to their viewpoint and much more contextual in the way we're interpreting the data. But I, Adrian, I'm with you. I think I have members of the HAB that think I should have been in school last week and made a mistake going to virtual.
And I'm thanks, thank you for that, Dr. Haish. And I'm interested, too, in hearing about that same process, but on the BEA side, because my understanding is with respect to that Wednesday, which you talked about possibly having some room to grow, but then room for change, but then President Whitman said, no, we're voting on Wednesday being a school day. My understanding is that Wednesday, the desire is for it to be 100% virtual, for teachers to be able to connect and have a little more intimacy, particularly with the students who are not going to come in at all. And and you know, related to that, what what role did the survey results have in in your and CLT's decision to arrive at this presentation today? Because as we discussed, 90% of teachers are not comfortable returning. And here we are with a return for K to 12 starting next month. And so I'm trying to figure out, one, what's up with Wednesday? And and two, two, what what did their survey results mean to you?
Wait, Adrian, I have to push back on 90% of teachers did not say they're not comfortable coming back to school. 92% said they were comfortable in a virtual environment. But then they were allowed to check all that apply. So they also said they were comfortable in a hybrid environment, and then some said they were comfortable in a full face-to-face environment. So I just don't want anyone in the public to think that 92% of our teachers don't want to return to a classroom. Correct, George?
So that's how I interpret it, too. I think teachers are ready to come back to the classroom, but they want to feel assured that we've done everything we possibly can to make them safe environments. And that we have the proper equipment in place. But I think that their anxiety is real, Adrian, and I think that they're wondering is real and legitimate because they're they're part of the greater community. So I'm going to, I'm going to answer your questions in reverse. The the survey results did influence the conversations that we had at the building level and with the BEA leadership around coming back. And in part of the meeting that we had Monday morning was to review safety procedures within classrooms, ventilation upgrades that we've made, go through the water testing to make sure everybody's on the same page with that. Because we want to be able to, our staff to feel as comfortable as they possibly can. And I know Dean has worked hard with people that are comfortable to come up with alternative arrangements along with our BEA leadership to make that happen. So if somebody feels like they need to just live stream to stay engaged, we're trying to figure out a way to help make that happen. The Wednesday conversation got muddy, right? Because we feel that face-to-face instruction makes the most sense for our kids, particularly the secondary kids that have been out for a long time. The BEA probably has some realistic ideas about how to best use time and best use space that we need to hear and see if we can incorporate those into the schedule. You can vote today on on a lot of different options. You can vote on the recommendation we made, or you can push it back to us and vote on the dates and tell us to keep working on the schedule. I think for me, after what we've come into, to have 80% of this resolved tonight, knowing that there are going to be four full days of instruction during the week, possibly five up to five, or that fifth day needs to look like something else, I I think is a victory for our kids. So whatever you guys decide tonight, I'm going to celebrate. And I'm going to have more work to do, no matter how your vote goes, because whether we vote for what's currently on the floor and we go and talk to BEA to figure out how to make what's right work, you send us back and say rebuild the schedules, we still got to be engaged in more conversations. Because there's going to be a percentage of students that stay totally live stream that we've got to ensure that we're meeting all their needs, too, in addition to our kids that are coming to hybrid face to face. And that may require some flexibility during the day or during the week in the scheduling process to make that happen.
Great. And and I will just say that that is correct. I misspoke. 92% of early learning teachers would teach all virtual, 55% hybrid, 39% full in person, and that's relatively reflective. And that's relatively reflective of the percentages that we saw in the other grades. Eighty to ninety percent would, would teach in person. Forty-five to fifty-five percent would teach hybrid. And twenties and thirty percent would teach full in person. So my point was, from the results of that, seemingly teachers have the greatest comfort in all virtual. And here we are, having gotten those results, saying we're going back K to twelve. And the survey results also indicated, albeit not as starkly a preference for the half-day hybrid across all grade levels. Parents, except for elementary and so elementary, put differently, elementary parents preferred half-day and are getting half-day. Middle school parents showed a slight preference for half-day are not getting half-day. Middle school teachers showed a slight preference for half-day are not getting half-day. But when it was presented, it, it seemed like there had been something that has happened since the survey to make teachers and central admin believe that, that the full day is the right approach. And you addressed that a little bit when you were giving the presentation initially. I'm just trying to now rewind back to the survey data and figure out what happened. People, people thought more about the schedule and realized the full days better. Can you just revisit that point you made earlier?
I, I can't. And, and I'm in late, Adrian. So there's some of this conversation that actually goes all the way back to August and September. And Mbika will be here to, to pick up my pieces after I, after I try to explain this. I, I, from my perspective, what happened is that we've, we got to the point where we've realized that six through twelve are going to come back to school. And I think that a lot of energy at the building level had gone into making the virtual environment, the most solid environment they could for their students and for their families. I think when I asked the question of what makes the most sense to you to the building administrators, they felt like we'd given them permission to think about half-day versus full day, where previously, I think they felt like I expected them to do a half-day and not have permission to talk about it. Once that conversation started, it was pretty clear that our building administrators felt most comfortable in a full-day environment, meeting the needs of kids. And they thought that it would meet the needs of families better too. Now, the conversation at the teacher level was happening kind of parallel to that, Adrian, and I wasn't as looped into that as I wish I had been now. But I know that there were conversations with the leadership council within BEA. I know that there were conversations at the building level between department heads and, and building administrators. And it's really, it started for us as a flurry late last week and picked up all kinds of momentum earlier this week. And Mbika, do you want to help with that?
Yes, I'll just add that you're correct. The high school administrators especially thought that the two full days would be best. And it kind of goes somewhat back to what you said earlier about making sure that high school students actually attend or not, you know, attend a full day versus a half day. And then there's an importance of the high school and the middle school being on the same schedule because they do have shared staff. And also they share students, middle school students who attend high school classes. In the survey, the teachers had a preference of the two-day full model. The middle school teachers, sixty-five percent, and the high school, fifty-nine percent. And like you said, trustee Young, they, it was kind of mixed results for the families. But one of the other things, just to note that over the summer, when we worked on the instructional summer committee, we had teachers and administrators on that committee. And actually, the recommendation was for this model. With the exception of they asked for one of the days to be a all-virtual day. So that was originally the model that was recommended by the instruction committee, which again was teachers and administrators from all levels. And then things changed. You remember the history and we end up going virtual and we end up going half-day. And I think like George, Dr. Heish said earlier, the thought was is that we had to stick with the half, half-day until you as a board asked us to do a survey. And once we asked for the survey and we saw that the results were favorable by our staff for a full two-day model. Someone mixed from our parent community, we thought that it might be prudent to go ahead and explore what a full-day model might look like.
Dr. Roberson, I have a question, or maybe George knows. When we say staff survey, were paras and secretaries in that survey group? Or was it just the teachers?
It was just the teachers, a separate survey is going out for secretaries and peer professionals. But this survey was geared for teachers.
So we haven't surveyed paras or secretaries yet. So we don't know how they feel about going back full day, half-day. I mean, we don't have
No, we, we don't, we don't. We got approval for the secretary survey right now. We're trying to get approval for the peer professional survey and then that will go out.
Okay. And that's, is that, that's about twenty-five percent of our overall staff? Paras and secretaries?
I would let Dean answer that question. I'm not sure what the percentage is.
Uh, yeah, approximately twenty to twenty-five percent.
Okay. I guess my, my concern or a question is we, in November, at our November meeting, and I understand that this is what the secondary administrators believe to be best for kids. But I, I do think it's worth lifting up to the community that we shifted middle school to a new schedule at the November meeting. And now we're asking to shift again and not a majority of or middle school parents preferred the half-days. So, but I, I do understand that we have some constraints then why we need to do this. One of them being transportation. Is that something we would need to continue to work through over the next, you know, next few weeks to get transportation short up if this does pass?
I, I think Mbika pulled a miracle off today already.
Yeah, well, yeah, for transportation, we were told that there were some concerns about doing transportation for the half-day model at the high school level. And so in asking about the full-day model, we worked diligently to get confirmed approval in writing that they would be able to provide transportation for a full-day model for our middle school and high school levels, in addition to doing the elementary model that we currently have, which is half-day.
So, but there would be, but they would not be able to do the half-day if we said we wanted to do a half-day for secondary, that wouldn't?
Not for high school. And the problem with having high school and middle school on separate schedules is some of the other pieces with the shared staff and shared students.
So, and then my last question, and then I'll stop. Have the middle, the secondary teachers been looped in that this potential shift or that, that we were going to be talking about this tonight so they can plan? Because again, we're, we're kind of shifting everything that they've been doing to a potential new model. So have they been looped in? Do we know how they feel about this shift or?
We, we have a sense that they're in favor of the full-day model. And we also have a sense that they want to continue talking about the, the virtual component during the week.
Okay, thank you.
The Wednesday, George, you mean the, the middle?
It could be, could be, could be some other, could be a half-day somewhere else. It could be, could look different, but there they, they have mentioned Wednesday, our staff has.
I guess if, for the kids that are virtual, we, we have to, the teachers have to have some time to connect with them. And that will be very difficult if they're doing full-day teaching. I mean, to live stream, they're not going to have that one-on-one touch point with virtual kids. So I, I am concerned about our virtual community.
I also think a half-day, a half-fifth day is impossible, given all the transportation challenges. So what I'm hearing is potentially that fifth day is either, either a full virtual day for every student, or it's a full half, it's a full hybrid day. It's my understanding that a half-day is not an option from a transportation perspective.
So what's happening with lunch on the full days? I'm, I'm really confused on the schedule, so I'm going to need clarity on special education, middle school. But if you could first answer my question about lunch, what's happening on those full days?
Well, I want you to, I want you to visualize how many students will actually be in a building. So third of our students want to stay in virtual. That takes a six-hundred-student building down to four-hundred students. You're going to chop that four-hundred in half for cohort A and another two-hundred in cohort B. So now we've got two-hundred students that we need to feed lunch to. We would probably still have three lunches that would have sixty students or seventy students each spread out socially distanced with their masks. And we would, the, the middle school principals have been talking about lunch and their rec programs and how they're going to manage those. So Nicole, buildings around us and districts around us that are doing this have up to six lunches during the day in order to keep them socially distant.
We are not doing off-campus lunch, is that correct?
I'm, I'm looking for help.
That's, that's correct. My understanding is, in previous conversations with the HAB, they did not recommend having an open campus.
In another earlier conversation that trustee Hokumur, I think sort of took the lead on was the possibility of still having this later start time that the high schoolers experience in virtual continue on while, when they go back in person, even if a hybrid schedule. But it doesn't, it doesn't, when we ended the conversation, it didn't seem feasible this school year. Is that still where we're at? They're going to have to
No, we think we are able to, to provide an eight-ten start for high school.
Oh, fantastic.
That's, that's what we discussed with transportation.
Holy cow, that's great news.
It, it will mean that middle school will be starting eight-thirty-five, which is a twenty-minute.
Dr. Roberson, there's a lot of logistics involved with this, correct? There's a lot of, I mean, you know, if we're talking about half-days or, is this a lot of logistics, especially with transportation food-wise? There's a lot of logistics.
Yes, yes, it is.
Dr. Roberson, can we just go back to the idea of more instructional time? Which is, you know, one of the reasons, the top reasons that teachers originally preferred a full-day hybrid model. So in the secondary schedule with a half-day, how much in-person instruction time would kids have per week?
So what they would be recapping in the full-day model versus the half-day model hybrid is the thirty minutes that they had in the middle of the day for cleaning. The lunch still occur. The BEA has asked for a little bit of additional prep time to help with the teaching in the two venues, teaching both in-person and live-stream at the same time. But capture at least thirty minutes per day from that time that we would have in the middle of the day to clean, to disperse back into the, the hours. And while that doesn't seem like a lot of time spread amount across class periods, it does add up. And it does allow our students to again, stay engaged as opposed to traveling during the middle of the day and hoping that they log back on into school.
But just to be clear, I'm talking about just total amount of time. Because in my mind, part of school is passing your friends in the hallway, you know, going to lunch. So there's instructional time, which I'm glad to know that it's going to be increased. But just from the time they walk in the door to the time they leave, I mean, it's more in a full day than you could get from five half-days, correct?
Yes, it's slightly, it's slightly more, yes. It will be, yes, they will be going into school from, for, at the high school, for instance, eight-ten to two-fifty each day. Those two full days, as opposed to going in from eight-ten, I think it was to eleven, ten, three days, five days a week.
Dr. Roberson, what does it look like for K to five students who have to quarantine? Like what, because with live streaming, it looks like live streaming, but just more often than you would be getting it otherwise. Or for a person who elects hybrid, let me, let me be clear about that. Obviously, if you elect lives, but virtual, you're live-streaming the whole time if you're in middle school or three, four, BCS plus middle school, plus high school. So what does it look like for the K to five classrooms that have to quarantine? Cause they can't jump into Virtual Academy, right?
No, so if they're individual students right now that have, where we've had individual students who had to quarantine, it looks like there's an identified person at each building. Often it's an instructional specialist who is checking in with the students and making sure that they're getting the assignments from their particular classroom. But in our case, where a whole class would have to quarantine, for instance, you know, they would just go virtual and a teacher would teach them virtually.
Okay. And then I think this is more for Dr. Heich. But the new proposed framework, you have presented it as it's a district-wide framework. But what I'm having a hard time understanding is how it's a district-wide framework, but it seems like the two versions of hybrid, hybrid strict versus hybrid less strict, less restrictive. That's not the right language, but, but I think you know the two center categories. Those seem to then break down based on age, like the old like the old analyses did. So, so it's a district-wide, but then we have this virtual restrictive that sort of caters to the K to five population, but you know, so help me figure out that.
So I, I'm assuming that it would be possible for our K through five age band to have a low enough infection rate that we would consider that full face-to-face. Where your middle school age students and your high school age students might not have that low of infection rate. I think that's the only time, Adrian, that we would be in a, a position that would be that unique. Or a case like we're experiencing now, we come back to the hybrid model. So we've got K through twelve in hybrid. And for some reason, that fourteen to eighteen-year-old age band blows up again from an infection rate that you might have, that, that point K eight in a hybrid restricted in a fourteen, eighteen and a virtual until things settle down. I think that's the flexibility, I think it allows, so we don't have to necessarily make system-wide decisions that don't feel appropriate in one group or another.
And then with the other considerations bar, the one you had highlighted for this presentation was consistency in scheduling. But there were others that you listed on a slide with words, not the slide with the chart. Such as food security, other factors. I'm wondering how you get updated data on those considerations aside from what we gained from the survey.
So the, the majority of that feedback is anecdotal. So it's either the, the emails that we get or the feedback from community members or staff members or requests that we might get from a family for support. There's no, as I'm aware, there's no consistent method other than a student emotional. And being, I know that we have wellness checks going in through, going on through the counseling department that we would gather information from.
Okay. And, um, thank you. And then, sorry, Dr. And then, sorry, Dr. Roberson, I have one more question for you. Um my understanding is that before elementary went back, the teachers got days of prep to, to adjust to the new model. I thought we, the, the middle school teachers had also gotten that, but then we never went back. Um, it, are high school teachers gonna get a chunk of time away from their obligations with virtual learning before the nineteenth to get some, some pretty heavy-duty PD?
Yeah, we would need to provide the high school with the two days, the same two days that we provided K through eight. And that time could be used or would be used to not only um have what we had previously was um Dwight Levens and his team had teachers or his staff set up in this buildings where teachers could sign up and get PD on how to set up their classroom for the live streaming. Um, and in addition to that, we've also been running PD sessions for teachers to do on the instructional side. Where they can participate in how to uh provide instruction in the state of in-person and live streaming. So both from the instructional side and the tech side, the high school people would need those two days.
Prior to the nineteenth though, correct?
Prior to the nineteenth.
Excuse me, I have three quick questions before we vote. Um, the first is about lunch. I'm concerned about how we're going to manage students um with taking their masks off during lunch and then having them put them back on. So how will we manage that?
So um I have not been in all of the conversations around lunch, um, because that, I think, um I think Rachel Feder has been in those conversations around lunch. But I do know that the teachers, well, the administrators are going to be setting up a seating chart for students during lunchtime, a lot of alternate spaces to make sure that kids can, are spread out as much as possible. Of course, they will need to take off their mask um because they're, they're eating. Um, but the, as much as possible, they're going to be spread out. I know that our high school um administrators have already sent us a list of needs that they have in terms of different types of tables. Um, so that they can spread kids out. Um, and again, there's going to be a seating chart so that they can, they're able to identify, um you know, uh where kids are sitting and be able to do contact tracing if necessary.
Okay.
Let me add this for lunch, because this is what I, I thought I heard, that there's gonna continue to be kind of like in the hybrid um model, an AB lunch where you restrict an eighty student population to a forty-forty. So you can have forty kids in the lunchroom and forty kids at rec. And then you flip it for AB and those kids go to, you know, the, the, from the rec kids to the lunchroom and from the lunchroom to the rec. And that could easily socially distance kids because you have such a greater space to eat where masks down to actually eat their food may not be such an issue. But that, that's what buildings will have to decide, you know, operationally daily. But that's what I, I heard today, so I just wanted to put my input.
Okay, thank you. And then real quick about, I'm sorry, did you wanna?
Can just add for lunch, just before you ask this question. Deputy Superintendent Feder um also said that they're consulting with nurses on recommendation to start measuring the distancing during lunch. So that's uh an, another piece. And I will say that they will also need additional staff to help supervise, to supervise that. And so that is just another piece that does come with having lunch during the day.
Thank you. And then because I'm concerned about live streaming, since a lot of parents haven't actually experienced the simulation. How flexible can we be in shifting from um the simulation to a virtual environment? So my understanding is middle school will do two days, full days in person, one day virtual, and then the other two will be live streaming all day?
I think that's what's, I, I think those options are on the table right now for you guys as a board, yes.
Okay, and so then they won't have the same opportunity that they currently have through the virtual environment to ask questions and interact with other students, is that correct?
So they'll be able, and I, I need Dwight's help on this, but they will be able to um ask questions. But it will not be in the same manner that they have right now in a virtual environment, just like we're all on this Zoom right, right now and being able to ask questions. That looks very different um than students who are live streaming into a classroom and trying to ask the teacher a question who's also working with students who are in person. So that, that is very different.
So weeks into this, if we get flooded with complaints from parents saying they don't like the live stream, how flexible can we be in switching back to our current format? Or will we stick with the live stream?
So we would definitely need um a significant amount of time to make that change. And we would also need to look at when is a natural um time to make that change? Because making that change again would change student schedules. And so that may not be something we would wanna do within a, a card marking. That may be something that we want to plan for at a natural card marking break. So.
Okay. Thank you. And then my last question, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to rush through these, cause I know the trustees are ready to vote. So I just wanted to make sure I got all my questions asked. So, so Anne, can you put up the framework again? Cause I just wanna get clarity on this framework. I'm still unclear on how we're going to make decisions.
And trustee McKinney, this is really helpful, so just take your time.
Okay, thank you. So say we look at this um data considerations on the left. So say one of these changes, um, let's say healthcare capacity is um, is below capacity. Say that switches to no. So then how do we determine when we're going to ta- stop school? I'm really confused by this.
So, so Nicole, I'm gonna look at the ones that are in yellow the most. So if the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services tells me um I can't have school, then I can't have school. If our um numbers within an age band go over thirty-five, then the framework tells me they, they, they probably ought to be in virtual. But I'm gonna look at all those other things that are in gray and see if they kind of agree or disagree with what's in yellow. Because we haven't seen the hospitalization rates in Oakland County be stressed yet. Um, we haven't had a lot of trouble with contact tracing yet. But those would be, if something changed in those, Nicole, it would make us all wonder, hey, what the heck is going on? And should we be paying more attention? And, and watching closer uh those primary factors and the primary drivers. I hope that helped.
Not really, because then basically we would default to the primary drivers at the, in the yellow.
We would, we would. They would, those would be the most important things we look at.
But George, as you said though, um, if, if by chance one of, one of the top left-hand orange checks moved to a no, that doesn't necessarily mean that as soon as it moves to a no, we go back to virtual. It would be looking and saying, addressing that move to no. However, as you said, you use the um hospitalization capacity, um that it, let's just pretend that's still five and things like that. So it's kind of a push-pull, um, but you first, I would think, would look to the yellow and see if the things below the yellow um are kind of trying to, to tie, try to tell the story of what's going on.
Yes, so we could have everything in yellow be good. And then all those things that are secondary drivers be trending in the wrong direction and still feel it's okay to be in school, cause our, our kids and our staff aren't being impacted directly.
So then there really wouldn't be any definitive way for parents or us or staff to determine if we're headed towards the direction of going back off virtual?
I, I think the clearest indicator for people to watch if they wanna know that are the, are the age bands. How many cases do you have per age band? And what is the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services saying about um the, the level that your safe start phase is in and whether or not they're allowing you to have instruction?
Well, a, and also we will be looking at, we'll be posting this every week, correct, Anne?
Yes, yeah, every.
Yeah, sorry, yeah, that, yes, that's correct.
So that, that's what I was talking about, the, looking at trends. If the COVID Act Now infection rate is trending up, you're also gonna be looking at these age bands. It, these numbers work in conjunction with each other, but not necessarily do they stand alone.
I just have a favor to ask with respect to this. Um for the age groups, if somehow we can add what is, it seems like the thirty-five is that sweet spot, judging by the question on the left-hand side.
Yeah.
And I, I, I would just appreciate just a smidge of context. On the right-hand side, OCHD age band data and COVID Act Now infection rate. Um, because you'll see for MDHS, HHS Safe Start pa- fa- phase, it says four. But then it explains why four is relevant, K to eight allowed in person. Whereas the next two don't have that context. And then on the left-hand side, when things are in the form of a question and the answer is yes or no, well then the context is, is within the question. So that's, that's helpful there. So it's just with those two where I'm like, you know, if I'm, if I'm a parent and I log on and I see this, that is a lot of numbers and I'm not sure what they're doing for the decision-makers in the district.
That's a great suggestion. So you could say, we could look at the fourteen age band now, let's say forty-one over a hundred, greater than fifty-five. Uh, framework suggests virtual or framework says virtual, something like that.
And given the limited real estate on this page, I mean, it may be something where you draw an arrow to the question, like, or a circle around the thirty-five and, you know, something like that. So it's not actually requiring more, more writing, but because those are the most important things, I think people need to know what they're looking at right away.
Okay, I, I'm sure Anne can fix that for us.
I will work on that.
Okay, are we ready to take this to a vote?
Trustees, again, before, before we vote, I wanna make sure we've got our questions answered, that were crystal clear. Um, what we're voting on, what we're giving the nod to central leadership, BEA and all the stakeholders to, between now and the next time we vote. So any other questions?
Say it again clearly.
So the, the, the plan that would be submitted to the state, um, if we vote would be stating that um an in-person hybrid return for our K to eight students would start on January eleventh. And for our high schoolers, nine to twelve would start on January nineteenth, twenty twenty-one. That's piece one.
Thank you.
Piece two, so if we vote yes, those are their two start dates, assuming all the other asterisks with regard to no governmental um shutdowns or things like that. The second piece that we're stating for those, the, the middle school and high schoolers is that instead of five half-day hybrid classes, that they will be two full-day. Help me, George, with the language, two full-day hybrid classes for each cohort. And I'm suggesting to be crystal clear that that fifth day is either cohort A or cohort B going face-to-face. And that will be the resolution that's, that I'll ask a motion for. If someone would like to change or edit that resolution before we vote, we can talk about that. I just wanna be crystal clear so that once we vote, it's crystal clear to George and his team. At least for right now, with again, the asterisk that we will make sure we keep our eyes on everything. That if we feel that um we do need to tweak going forward, that this board is in constant communication with regard to whether it's that fifth day, what do we do? Whether it's regard to um any other transportation issues we may come across. Um, the whole gamut, that the community, the teachers, the BEA and central leadership has our pledge that we will keep our eyes on this da- on a daily basis to ensure that what we approve of tonight um is working.
Well, we've heard that the teachers would prefer the, the Wednesday or one-day virtual. And that, um, or some, some teachers would, I don't, I don't know. But, um and then trustee Brass talked about the benefit to the one hundred percent virtual students to have touchpoints with their teachers, which would be possible on that virtual day. Before I vote, because you're saying the vote would be on having that day be one hundred percent hybrid for a rotating cohort, can, can someone tell me why that? I, if that is desired for, for a particular trustee, can somebody explain why that is your desired use of that day? Knowing the, the benefits to, to teachers and a hundred percent virtual students that have already been put out there?
Okay, so we can either do it that way, Adrian, or again.
No, I, I'm literally asking, so I don't care. I, I'm not telling you how to, how to set up the vote. I'm, I'm genuinely curious to hear from my colleagues before we go to a vote. Why, from you even, why, why would that day? Cause that's different than the, than the full-day hybrid schedule from August. The full-day hybrid schedule from August did have a virtual day. So I'm, I'm wondering for those people who are comfortable going to vote on that fifth day or third day or however you wanna visualize it, being in-person hybrid as opposed to one hundred percent virtual. I just wanna hear the benefits of that.
So thank you for the question, Adrian, because I thought the fifth day was going to be virtual. I thought we were talking two days of in-person and two days live streaming and one day off-virtual.
Let me, let me jump in now, and let me just say that here's where the pro and the con kind of happened. And Amy, I, I'd ask for your assistance on this. Is that when you had an AB, AB, AB cohort, you had a maximized face-to-face academic instruction for kids. And that was what we heard parents say, that's what we heard kids want. This is what was reflected in the, in the survey data, is that they wanted maximum face-to-face um academic time. And that's what that provided us. And so that's where the, the AB, AB, A and then consideration of continuation B cohort was.
Well, and also in August, when we were originally looking at the full day with two cohorts and a day of all virtual day, that was when the science was telling us that we needed to do a deep cleaning in between the two cohorts. We have since, obviously, we don't do one day of deep cleaning in the elementary schools because we clean in between the.
Every day, every day.
And so they, and the way we have it set up, so as not to have kids isolated for five days without face-to-face education, you're gonna have to do your deep cleaning in the afternoon or at night after the kids have left the school anyway.
Hence, hence, this increases academic instruction time for our kids at a face-to-face learning environment.
But what about virtual kids, Lori? I mean, the virtual kids. But what about virtual kids, Lori? I mean, the virtual kids?
But Amy, I mean, sorry, I'm so sorry, Jen, but isn't that still afforded to the kids that are live streaming at an academic or, or at a, at a virtual setting? Doesn't that still afford them the same kind of academic privilege?
I don't, I don't believe so. I mean, if they're competing for attention when a teacher's teaching her class in person and then you've got kids, it's not like Zoom. So they're going to have to try and get the teacher's attention, ask the question, and then if they need help, it's not like they can stay after class or they could go and do check-in during asynchronous time. They don't have that luxury. So if, if the teacher's going right on to the next class, I, I just, I'm concerned. I, I agree a hundred percent that this is great for those that are going to go face-to-face, but I feel like this is not, it wasn't a great option for virtual four months ago, and this isn't, this, if we were to vote that way, where we were doing A B, A B, A, and not having, leaving a day for synchronous, asynchronous time. Our, our virtual kids, I, I feel like we're doing a disservice, in my opinion.
But that was the same, that was. I completely hear you. I, I'm so sorry, Kim. I, I, I'm really sorry.
It was the same thing for the five-half days, right, Jen? That was a concern that you had brought up. Gosh, I mean, months ago, correct?
Yeah.
Days, that even when we talked about that two-hour break, you know, when the kids would go there, that potentially the, the true virtual, one-hundred percent, never really were afforded that. So.
And then we're going to ask our teachers then, if, if Joe at home has a question, hey, can you come in and help me before, I mean, then we're asking even more than it just, I, I well, it feel for our, our virtuals.
You know, Jen, you're bringing up some very, very valid concerns. And, and I recognize that this is not going to be easy. And any transition we do, any new curriculum we learn, any new program we have, any new challenges of, you know, creating the live streaming with microphones and, you know, getting the kids on a, a large screen Zoom so that a teacher can see the virtual kids as well as the kids in front of them in a hybrid, i- i- in a, in a classroom setting. This is going to be hard. I'm so sorry for this. It, it breaks my heart. I think that what we have to do is we have to try at some point. We have to have a starting point. And I don't want anyone to fall through the cracks as we try to figure out all of the pros and cons and all of the benefits and, and what's not working. But because everything is changing so quickly and that we are faced with an inconsistent model, you know, inconsistent model, that we are going to have to do the best we can. And that I'm, I'm asking for extra support for teachers. I want teachers, I, I, I'm praying that we can hire support for teachers so that they can have an assistance to take off the pressure of, of having somebody in the classroom versus the instruction they're doing to look at the kids online on the screen that we have. Just some kind of support for teachers. This is what they need. Teachers need the support, and that's where we have to be there for them. Kids, our, our, our main priority is for, for optimizing children's learning. Do we have a perfect formula? My answer is no, but we have to constantly reevaluate our, our program, which we do every month. And now it's going to be every two weeks and just keep adapting to make sure that we meet the needs of kids and that we, we support teachers.
But Lori, just, I'm sorry, quick question, just clarification. I asked the question how flexible we could switch back. So ju- just so that I'm understanding this, we're talking about two full days in person for students and then three days all-day live streaming, correct? Three days, all-day live streaming, which I have gone through the simulation, I cannot imagine live streaming all for three full days versus having a virtual environment. So, but what I heard, I think Dr. Roberson say earlier, is that it would take a while to pivot from this and then we would have to wait for a natural break again. So this is something that we would have to live with for a while. Correct, Nicole?
No, I, I don't.
Lori, wait, I need, I need clarification. When, when you, when you say live streaming versus virtual, what are you seeing as the difference between the two? Because.
There's a difference.
There's a difference. So right now, we're virtual. Right now, I can hear my son interact with his classmates. I can hear him ask his teacher questions. I can hear his teacher answer his questions. So now I'm trying to visualize him sitting in a room watching through the, just watching other students in a classroom interact with the teacher, and they won't have that same ability to ask questions and interact with other students in that environment. I, I saw the simulation, I participated in it. So now we're going from the opportunity to have breakout rooms and conversations with other classmates versus sitting there and just live streaming in a classroom for three full days.
Well, but hang on, so if your child's hybrid, they would actually be doing three days face-to-face one week, and then the next week they'd have two days face-to-face. So over a ten-day period, half of their time would be spent face-to-face, half live streaming.
Well, again, this is where I want to be very clear. Yes and no, depending on how we vote. So, right now, let's take four days, four whole days. We're, we're now told, forget the half-days, correct? Forget the half, half morning, half afternoon. So we've got four days, two of which are students are face-to-face for the entire day. The other two, they are live streaming. So that means that half of their class is sitting in the classroom and our, our, our kids for those two days are, to your point, Nicole, sitting there, they're, they're on their computer, they're looking through the computer, but the teacher's teaching fifty percent of their class. And so I, I kind of, I don't want to, don't want to lead the witness, but I think we're all kind of there because we can't do half-days because of transportation and we really do want more instructional time for our kids. So let's just say those four are done. Where, where, where we're coming up with, where I want to make sure before we vote, what to do with that fifth day? The fifth day originally, I guess, option number one is that fifth day becomes a face-to-face every other week for our kids. So Nicole, your son on week one will go full-time, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. The next week, he'll go to school Monday, whatever, Monday, Thursday, however it works. But then the next day, he, next week, he goes to school full-time for two days. And then that third day, he is, well, then it's, I guess, all virtual, well.
Live streaming.
He's, he's live streaming. So as Amy said, in a ten-day period with option one, he gets five full, full face-to-face days and he gets five true live streaming. Where again, half the class is there. The other option, which it sounds like the teachers would like us to consider is, again, we've got these first four days, two of which, again, our kids are face-to-face, two of which they're live streaming. So those never really go away, right? We know two days a week, two days a week. That fifth day, though, what the teachers are asking us to consider is, nobody physically goes in the classroom. So it's all virtual. So it goes to what we now know as our kids sitting in front of the, the computer, but everybody's sitting in front of the computer. So perhaps they do some breakouts to what Jen brought up, maybe the teacher says, you know, these virtual, um, kids that are virtual, I really want to connect. So they take the time to meet with them individually because they know the rest of their virtual class is doing, again, small projects, things like that. So that's really, to me, and again, I don't mean to, to, to oversimplify, but it's just, what do we as trustees tonight want to give the marching orders to the team on what to do with that fifth day?
I think it needs to be virtual and not live streaming.
A hundred percent agree. I think that we have to offer it as some, especially for our virtual kids. I mean, if we're giving, if we, I just think it, it's equitable, in my opinion, for our virtual kids. We, that, they have an opportunity, I mean, talking about emotional and mental well-being, that we have virtual kids that would live stream all five days, I, that is not going to be a, a good solution for me, in my opinion. I, I think that we have to, have to offer this just to recognize our virtual community. And we have, I, I don't have the survey in front of me, but wasn't it about thirty-three percent for secondary ed for virtual?
Yes, yep.
But again, I want to make sure that the community understands that this was never, this was never an option with the five-half days. I mean, so Jen, I, again, I, I, I know you brought this, this concern up before, but when, if we, if and when we voted for the five-half days, the virtual students never had the peace where it was one-hundred percent virtual so that the teachers would have time to check in. So this is something new that we're offering if we so choose to go this way.
The difference being with what we currently have in place now, the only program with five-half days is elementary in which virtual kids are enrolled in a BBA.
Right, and what we last couple of months, it's always been five-half days, regardless of our start date, I mean, for all of our kids. So, and then, and there was never a check-in point for the virtual kids, which we brought up, and we were told either above, before school, after school, things like that. So.
Well, well, but that's not true. At the high school level, we had Xbox.
Right, so it's the middle school, right, right.
Yeah.
Again, I just want to make it clear for the community too, that that, again, this is something additional. Okay, so.
Just for clarity, how long is this in place for, until we revisit it or until the next marking period?
We would, we would have to renew our return-to-learn plan monthly. So you would, you know, we could have a conversation about this every month until we're back full face-to-face. How's that?
But is, okay, Dr. Roberson, is that how you answered it earlier when I asked the question?
Well, I, I thought you were asking about whether or not there could be actual virtual teachers for students if we, this model and this model was not working. And there would need to be significant planning because that would mean a schedule change with teachers. If, um, you recall, when we went to a virtual dedicated virtual teachers or virtual academy for our elementary students, it required teacher changes and teacher shifts. And that would be the same thing that would happen, have to happen at our secondary level. And so while we, we are revisiting next, every month, we wouldn't be able to just change within a week or two weeks to make that happen because of the need to change schedules.
So the answer is, we stick with this until we revisit in another month, and then the alternative is what?
Well, I, I'm thinking about that right now. Because you've got two viable options that you're discussing, that both, both options have merits, right? And I'm wondering in my head, what's the easiest one to test drive and then pivot from if it doesn't work? Is it easier to put that virtual day in and see if it's feels like a wasted day to much of the community? And then pivot to an A B, A B, A B, A B all the way out, or is it easier for you to start at A B, A B, A B and try to insert a virtual day later? Because you're missing the needs of kids or we discover that, that this is right, so. I, I don't have a good answer to that. It feels to me like it'd be easier to pivot virtual to more face-to-face than the other direction, but.
Well, George.
It's just a pivot.
Is, isn't the other option that we, we vote to return on the dates that we've said? And with a full-day hybrid model? And we, I, I mean, I'll be honest with you. I, I would like to hear something more about i- if we're going to keep kids out of school for an extra day, I would like to hear what this day is going to look like. Is it going to be one-hundred percent synchronous? Is it going to be partially asynchronous? Because if it's one-hundred percent synchronous, I don't see how that's giving the virtual kids any more contact or specialized contact, I should say, with their teachers above and beyond what any of the other kids who are in, you know, who are in face-to-face. They'd be in the same Zoom meeting, they'd be getting the same attention as those other kids. So.
But when teachers are teaching one format, they're able to more effectively do small groups. So like you were in on a Zoom that also had a teacher in person and, and saw the difficulties there. And so when it's one format, um, yeah, you're still going to break up into small groups and get ten minutes to complete exercises one through eight. But you can bop into different Zoom rooms and, and give your full attention to each room without saying, please stay seated, John. Cara forgot her workbook, let me go rip it out, I'll be right back to this Zoom. Oh, time's up, okay, some, you, you know, like, it's just.
No, I, I, I do understand that because I, I did sit through that. But I guess what I'm saying is that, that's going to be the same time for the face, the hybrid kids as it is for the all-virtual at that point, right? We're not doing something separate for the virtual kids. That's what I thought we were getting, is this was going to be time where they could really give more attention to the kids who are live streaming the other four days.
And, yeah, they're not having a separate time, but what it is, is that because everybody is together and it allows them to connect with all of the peers in their classroom, and it also allows the teacher to have the same amount of attention to all of the kids, the virtual kids and the in-person kids at the same time. So, you know, in this format that we're currently in, we're all in a Zoom. And if I was teaching the class, I could give all of you the same amount of attention and that does look different if half of you were in person and half of you were live streaming. And so, just, just to clarify the question about what are, what are they gaining for the wanting to have the virtual day? As an instruction committee, when we talked about this before, it was more so around the instructional piece of being able to have your whole class together at one point and instructing them together and bringing them along in terms of having breakout rooms, the collaboration in the community of having these kids all together in one place.
So Amy, I'm going to circle back to the question. I, I, I think you started with, could you today approve the date, the return dates in the full-day hybrid model and send us back to get more information about what a Wednesday might look like before you decide on a schedule?
I, I, I mean, I guess I would like that because it, you know, we hear a lot that, you know, about fatigue from looking at screens. And so in some ways, I mean, just another synchronous day, that doesn't, that doesn't do anything for that fatigue, right? But would there maybe be parts of the day that are asynchronous? I, I certainly think, I, I don't know about anybody else's kids, but you know, the high school's using some asynchronous time very effectively right now. And so that would be where I would maybe want to hear some more details about because I could actually see how there could be some asynchronous time on those days for the kids who are face-to-face and maybe then some extra additional time for the all-virtual kids. I mean, you can make it, almost anything happen. I, I, I don't know. I just am wondering if it's worth exploring it more, because it does sound like the teachers have ideas about it, I'm assuming.
They do.
So George, I guess the question then is, so if we vote on the dates today, I guess, when, when do we, is it by the end of the month we have to vote on the structure? Because I guess I want to be very clear what our expectations are to whomever will come up with, you know, whether it's a BEA, central admin, a whole team. I guess, what are the next steps if we decide to go that route?
Well, I think January 5th is our next study session. Is that right?
Uh, yes.
The 5th, so I, I, I think we should have something to you for the 5th to talk about.
But then we're not voting until, no, we're not.
I think you can vote today on, on full days, hybrid, and, and on a return date.
So five, five.
And Becca, you need to tell me.
Again, this is what I'm gonna start with, trustees. I am proposing that we vote on the start dates, which we've seen hopefully everyone, everyone has experienced that. And I'm putting, again, I'm saying that we vote on the, the full days with Wednesday or that fifth day being a face-to-face. And the expectation that on the 5th, that we can talk about then is if, if, if everybody wants to sit around a table and say, let's not do the 5th, or like, excuse me, let's not do face-to-face. This is what we envision that fourth, fifth day looking, then perhaps, and at that point, we, we take a look at it. I, I don't know. I mean, trustees, you gotta help me here with.
I think we owe it to the parents who have, oh, I'm so sorry. I, I think we owe it to the parents who have just sat through three hours of us discussing this to make a decision that we can go into the holiday knowing definitively, so that they can plan accordingly, or at least wrap their heads around what their child will be doing when they return to school. I think that's what we owe them.
You mean dates, you mean voting?
Not just dates, I, I mean a model. Whether it's gonna be full in-person or hybrid.
The model was in discussion. I mean, the model is not definitive, but the dates can be.
I'm not comfortable ending this meeting without at least a, a, a model. Knowing that, again, we will always keep the lines of communication open, we will always talk about it at study sessions, but we've gotta give the BEA and the teachers, I mean, we've gotta help them with the next map.
So, what, what do you need from, I guess my question is, what do you need from us? So Nicole and Jennifer want to vote on, sorry, they called you Jennifer. Trustee Rass and trustee McKinney want to vote on a day that includes an all-virtual day. And, and I'll throw my hat in, in that camp as well. Do you need more than the three of us to have that option be on the table for, for our vote?
I guess I'm gonna say it a different way. I can put the other option on the table, and then either we vote on it, or someone after we make a motion, moat, makes another motion to edit my motion to take that fifth day and flip it from a full-time to a virtual. So however you guys wanna go down, go down the path. But, so I guess, with, all right, so with that said, we had a, we had a vote. So I am, I'm looking for a motion for the initial plan approval for a return date of January 11th for K through 8, and for January 19th, high school 9 through 12, with a full five-day, George, how do I say it, hybrid, face-to-face, in-person plan. So the cohorts would be A, B, A B, and then that fifth day would rotate every week between A and B. Trustees, do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
All right, so that motion, that resolution is motioned by Vice President Anajaluni. Do I have a second?
Second.
Joan, the motion is seconded by Treasurer Hokumer. So now I will open it up for discussion edits prior to us voting. Brian, I'm sorry, did you have something to say before, and I cut you off? Sorry, hon.
No, no, that, that's okay. I, I did, but I'm, I'm okay now, I'm good.
Okay, so where we're voting, so any other discussion? So I am gonna do, go ahead, Nicole, sorry.
No, did you want us to edit your, the motion that's on the floor? I move that we use the fifth day as an all-virtual day to honor those parents who responded to our survey and wanted a virtual option. I also believe that having three full days of livestreaming is too much for children. The virtual fifth day would allow for more interaction among students and teachers.
So trustees, do I have a second for Nicole's motion to edit the resolution?
Second.
Okay, so Joan, that edit to the motion was Nicole, and then it was seconded by trustee Young. Any other discussions?
Well, I, I mean, I could see this being a starting point, but here's my concern. One of the reasons why the five-half days was popular with parents is because it gave them, it, the opportunity for their students to have touchpoints every day. And so my concern is that from a social, emotional, mental health perspective, we now are still gonna have kids sitting in their rooms on a computer for three full days every day.
Just like our virtual kids are, because of a, a choice, yeah, I mean, that's.
I, so I'm just saying that, you know, that's why I, I really, I, I don't know, I would like to know, how could we work out the livestreaming or a virtual day to really be advantageous for both groups?
Well, and I think we've heard loud and clear from the community, or at least pieces of the parts of the community, that they, one, they want options for their children. And two, they want as much face-to-face time that we can execute from, from safely. So, you know, I'm gonna tip my hat a little bit. I, I will vote no for this, because I feel as a parent for that fifth day, it's my choice, if I so choose to, to put, to have my children go face-to-face, that I want that extra day every two weeks, that I want my kids face-to-face. And if people, my next-door neighbor feels that they want to keep their kids virtual, we are still, to me, affording the district and affording our parents the opportunity. So trustees, right now, again, in the interest of time, are, we are saying, all the start dates, which we reiterated, we're saying for face-to-face slash for hybrid days. And now we're saying the fifth day would be a hundred percent virtual for all children. Did everyone understand that before I call a vote?
No, could you say it again, please? Kim, I apologize.
Okay, so we originally started with, so we all have four days. We originally, Brian, started with the resolution that that fifth day was going to be face-to-face. So our kids would be face-to-face every other week. And for the week that they weren't face-to-face, they would livestream with the rest of their cohorts. Nicole and Adrian have edited the resolution. So now what we're voting on is still four days, but that fifth day, every week, our kids will be, our kids will be virtual, not livestreaming. Every single student in their class will be in, on a computer zooming. So essentially, and this is again my thing, we're taking away one face-to-face day for our students per two weeks, is, is kind of my take.
That's true, but as a parent of, of a middle schooler, to me, the, I'm picking quality over quantity. So my son could have three more days in person, but he also is going to have three long days of livestreaming with no interaction, where he could have the opportunity of one of those interacting with his teacher and other students. Because to me, it's not appealing to sit and livestream for three days.
Every, every two weeks, very fair, yes. So that's kind of the point, counterpoint, right?
Okay. I want, I want the kids to go back to school as quickly, as quickly as they possibly can, face-to-face.
And so the dates, trustees, we have not moved on correctly, are July, January 8th and January 19th. And the three days or two days that the teachers need to prep, and Becca and her team, it's going to be before those days. So they will start, okay, so with.
And I have to say, that wasn't just about my child. When I say that, I was talking about in general terms. And it also honors those students who want virtual school as well.
Absolutely, and again, very fair points. Okay, anything else before I call a vote? And again, this is for the four days, and the fifth being one hundred percent virtual, okay? Okay, Vice President Anajaluni.
Sorry, really quickly, just to clarify for the community, it's not technically the fifth day of the week.
You're right.
That's a hundred percent virtual.
Right, we don't even know what day it is, quite obviously.
Correct, yeah, so I just don't want, yeah, so, so when we say fifth, yeah, so just to clarify.
And that's a very good point, Adrian, because it could be a Friday. And so in which case, if your child, yeah, so it, it, we don't know what day it is. It's the, it's, it's one of the.
Right now, according to the slideshow, it would be Wednesdays.
Okay.
George is laughing at us.
Kim, will you just read this resolution one more time? I'm so sorry.
Nope, that's okay, so.
We're only talking about middle school and high school. I think the resolution reads secondary, but for the public, what we are voting on is the middle school and the high school hybrid model. The K-5 hybrid model is remaining the same.
With a start date of January 11th.
Okay.
Right, so three, well, the munchkins will walk in on the 11th. Everything will stay as it had previously been. We're not, we're not touching that one at all right now.
Okay, so now read this resolution just one more time, so I know what I have.
Okay, so trustees, there's two pieces to it, the start dates. And again, for K through 8, that's January 11th. And for 9th through 12th grade students, our start date is January 19th. That is embedded in the resolution that we will vote on. The next piece of the resolution that we're voting on is for four days a week, don't know which four, for four days a week, our students will be hybrid, which means that fifty percent of them will be livestreaming, and the other fifty percent will physically be in the classroom with an adult, a teacher. The other day that we're voting on, that fifth day of the week, the kids are all virtual. So nobody is in the physical classroom, the entire class is livestreaming, which is what they're doing right now. That's what we're voting on.
I think we do know the days of the week, though. Am I wrong? Because the, the slide says Monday, Thursday, Tuesday, Friday.
George and Embika, I'll leave that, please answer.
Yes, Wednesday, and that's because of the middle school having these odd and even days with their electives and having the rotating cohorts of A, Monday being an A cohort and Tuesday being a B cohort. Wednesday is the best day for that even odd schedule, so that's why it's Wednesday.
And that's slide three of.
Yeah, I know.
Any other questions?
I think there are.
I'm, I'm really sorry, but I genuinely do have a question. We also have a new framework. At what point are we approving that? And the reason I ask is because on slide, on slide five, it lists the four new categories. And in italics, it says, "The BPS superintendent makes the final decision on BPS status with input from BPS central leadership team. The Board of Education has approval of the framework, slides 12 through 15, and safety practices implemented by the district." So do we need a formal vote about the framework, because that is new as well?
Good call, trustee Young. I think we do need to vote on that.
Dr. Roberson, can you do, I'm not sure, does that fall under this piece of paper that we submit? Do you do the presentation as well, or is it just the specific dates that are in that?
I'm sorry, I muted.
I'm pulling up the.
All of the information on the slides, we are, so we attach the slides, right, when we submit?
Yeah, we attach the slides to our, to our website. Actually, when we submit, they get, they ask for very minimal information, more around the instructional model for the students. But we, the reason that, if you see on the form, it has like the YouTube video here of our board meeting, we put the, all of the slides together on the website, so that if anyone from the state wanted to check, they could see what you guys voted on.
Okay, so it sounds like just the learning model, President Whitman, it sounds like we actually don't need formal approval of the.
No, great call, though, thank you. Okay, keep going. All right, are we ready?
Kim, we're rolling back on the 12th and the 19th, right?
The 11th.
The 11th, I apologize.
And, no, the 11th and the 19th.
19th, okay, let's go.
And again, this is the one with the fifth day being all virtual, okay? Are we ready? So then, George, if we, okay, all right, ready? Okay, Vice President Anajaluni, how do you vote?
I vote positively on a return date, K through 12, sorry.
Yes or no, I mean, you can't break it up. You gotta just give me a yes or no, hon, sorry.
I, I, I vote for return date on January 11th, K through 8. Yes, and I vote for.
You can't break it up.
Okay, then I vote yes, but what I want to say is, and this is very important, I understand our schedule is going to be in discussion, and that's where I am going to be somewhat flexible, and that's my vote. So my vote is support.
Secretary Rass. Treasurer Hokumer.
No.
Uh, trustee Jennings.
Support.
Trustee McKinney.
Support.
Trustee Young.
Support.
And Vice, or President Whitman, I vote no. So the motion passes five to two. So Dr. Heist and Dr. Roberson and the team. We're all set.
We'll go to work, yeah, we'll figure it out. Okay, thank you very much.
Beck. I need clarification, I, I, I need clarification here. I know you stated the resolution, Kim, at least two or three times, but we had so much conversation that convoluted the direction that we were going. And I want to clarify that I'm voting for a return date for K through 8 on January 11th, and a very strong recommendation for return date for 9th through 12th on January 19th. I understand that our hybrid program. I understand that our hybrid program is going to be somewhat or subjected somewhat to flexibility of scheduling and and whatever other any inhibitors there are. But is this not what I'm agreeing to?
You agreed to one full day virtual.
Right.
That Wednesday would be 100% virtual.
So nobody's in class on Wednesday.
Physically in class, but they're in class, right?
Right. It is 100% virtual. No live streaming, no hybrid.
Then 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 I apologize, I misunderstood. And what I'm I'm going to have to do is to renege my vote and say, I want maximum academic face to face educational experience for our kids. And I don't know that one day virtual learning is going to provide that. I don't, I I I'm not sure of that. I want to believe that, but I just don't know. And so my answer is going to have to be a nay.
Okay.
Kim, we are voting on whether our kids want to go back on on.
No.
On. Is that right?
No, Brian. That's what I thought initially, but because we had so much conversation in between that it got a little bit convoluted.
Hey, guys, this is my last vote. I want the kids in school.
Yes. And we want to maximize their academic face to face instructional time. And that is where I am emphasizing my vote.
Brian, what, when you voted yes, you voted yes for one day a week for middle school and high school being 100% virtual for all students. If you had voted no, it would have opened up an opportunity for that for that day to be part of the hybrid model and have some students in person. But by voting yes, you voted for that day to be 100% no kids in school.
No, I want kids back in school, so.
This got confused.
Adrian, Adrian, thank you very much for clarifying that. I understand what your point is. It's just so convoluted to me that, listen, I I understood that on the 11th and the 19th, kids would get back to school and we would, and we have other things going on, right? We have, we have people that don't want to go or people we do want to go. I think we're making a little too much of this. Can we just please put it down to, hey, on this date, we're going to go, we're going to do this, and on this date, um, K through eight, we're going to go, go, we're going to go?
President Whitman, can we do a revote and then vote with what you originally, the motion you originally made? We'll vote on that.
I I don't know that you 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 guys, you passed a motion.
Right.
Can't do that. We have to go on the motion that you made.
If there was, if there was confusion with the with the resolution and the motion, I think we have to clarify.
I I think you.
There was.
Yeah, I think.
Maybe we do it last time when we had to revote.
But we revoked it.
So why can't we just do that tonight versus having to come back and do it again another day?
You're right, Nicole. You're right.
No, Nicole, I think you phrased it as Kim's original motion. We have to re, if we are calling for a revote, we would have to go on the motion you made that Adrian seconded.
Amy, remember, we talked about this for the last one? What is it called when somebody calls up? Here on you.
I don't know.
I'll find it.
Guys, let's keep my vote the way it was. And I mean, just want the kids to go back to school as soon as possible.
So Brian, either, okay. So the dates are set. We, I think, I don't want to speak for all seven of us, but I think all seven of us are nodding our head the 11th and the 19th.
But that's only part of it.
It's part of it, but the where the pivot is, is this fifth day. So Brian, I'm going to ask you. And again, we've already voted, but do you want that fifth day for your for your kids to be every week virtual in front of a camera? Or do you want one week it to be in person, but then the next week, they're live streaming? So the second week, they're still behind a computer, watching their classmates in class. The third week, they go back to school for that fifth day. The fourth week, they're back to live streaming. So it's essentially, we're trying to figure out with that fifth day and try to tell the teachers, how do we want that day structured?
And how maximize academic instruction time?
And can I, and I I support, I mean, I won't say I support, I understand where you're coming from, trustee Azaluni, when you say maximize. But for me, just so that the community is clear on why I'm voting against a a third day of live streaming is because, to me, it's qua, it's quality over quantity. I feel that the quality of interaction and instruction in a virtual environment for that fifth day is better than having a child sit in live stream for a third day all day. Because I had the experience of seeing the live stream simulation. And my concern is that parents who say they want live stream are not fully aware of what the live streaming experience is. And for those, one third of students who choose, who would prefer to have an all virtual academy, this will provide them that interaction with other students and the teacher that they would like in a virtual academy. I do not believe that maximizing in person while the other children are live streaming for a third day is really a quality instruction opportunity for students.
You know, while I, while I, I understand and respect that perspective, trustee McKinney, I'm also acutely aware that that is only two days of instruction that is face to face for the kids. And we all, and and I can, I can blanketly say this because I know all of you now, working with two, with with three of you for two years and the rest of you for four years, that we hold the 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 premise of of children first, their academic achievement, their social and mental well being first, that two days a week at a face to face instruction is not enough. And that is where I keep going back to. And so to maximize that opportunity where you have a child in a two day ver, and and three day, because it's going to be A B, A B, A B schedule, where they are face to face, not only with their teacher, but with their with their peers and in a social setting. This, to me, considers the holistic learning of children. And this is.
Okay, really quickly, just because this is not like, we have voted, we don't have another, we don't have a motion on the table. We should not be having this conversation under Robert's rules of order. If we want to reconsider this vote, someone on the prevailing side, which would be any one of the five of us, has to make a motion to reconsider.
You know.
Once the motion to reconsider is voted on and seconded.
Yeah, right, sorry.
And a majority passes it, then we re, then the revote takes place. But the motion to reconsider has to be put on the table, seconded, passed. And then the exact same motion that was presented by trustee McKinney can be voted on again.
Adrian? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Adrian and and Kim, thank you so much. I'll just stick with my vote, the way my vote is right now, okay? And we can call it today.
Okay, so you're not, so that, I mean, that's, but again, that would be.
I voted and that's.
So, Kim, I I I think we we move forward with Wednesday or whatever day of the week it is as virtual. And I I mean, as George said, we reconsider again next month if we need to. I mean, right? Isn't that the beauty of this return to learn plan, that every month we get to revisit?
Yep, and if this doesn't work, we'll pivot and bring in something that makes more sense. And if it might make the most sense, we'll find out. So so, Kim, may I say that concludes the interim superintendent's report?
Finally. It gets even better because now we're turning into board comments. All right, trustees. Any board comments, updates?
I have a quick update on the BEF. We are currently in our annual fund campaign and.
No, come on.
And yeah, our two and a half times what we were a year ago. So thanks, I want to thank the community for all their donations. We're ramping up or wrapping up the year with the annual fund if people want to donate. And then look for information coming soon about a revised BASH for 2021.
Hey, Jen.
Yes.
Thank you for that, too. I've gotten several things. If anybody can donate or, you know, make this thing a bigger, you know, because we're not going to be face to face this year. It's really a thing, yeah.
Thanks, Brian.
I I would just like to say two quick things. First of all, Brian, I want to let you know that I have enjoyed serving with you. And I've enjoyed our phone conversations. And I I really do hope that you aren't going to be a stranger, that you really are going to show up at the podium a couple of times at least. And I wish you all the best. And I, that's it, I wish you all the best. And thank you for your service to your community, which, as you said, is, I think, the best thing any of us can do. Second, I just wanted to give a shout out to our Schools Offer Support SOS and our Chartwells team. I don't know if everyone is aware, but now on Thursdays, in addition to handing out lunches, SOS is working with Chartwells and also handing out food boxes. So families who are in need can come to, it's the Grove's parking lot on Thursdays, and they can pick up the lunches as well as food boxes. And I always get this wrong from Gleaners. And it's all, it it's pantry food. It's really, it's not perishable, so people can take it and use it. And and it's good quality. And that's it.
Anything else, trustees?
Yep, just going forward for next time, since we've had a couple of votes where it's resulted in confusion, I think we need to create a system, and this can happen offline, where perhaps if a proposal is amended, the newly amended language is presented on screen at the time of voting. So that there are multiple modes of introduction to the vote, both verbal and written. Because I think I think we need to have a system in place so so something like this does not happen again.
And to that, I think that the verbiage around this is so confusing, you know, hybrid, virtual, live stream. I think even having definitions defined on the screen as well would be helpful so that we're all speaking the same language.
Real quick, Brian, you will be missed. I will be, I miss sitting next to you when we actually do meet face to face. So thank you for your. Over the past two years, I appreciate it. And I'm sure Nadine and the girls are excited to have you back in full attention. So thank you for everything you've done for me and for our community.
Thank you. And am I allowed to say something? Listen, all of you trustees, all the trustees, Kim and Lori, the trustees, and the, but I'm going to wait until I I get to that podium. You're going to have to give me six minutes rather than three minutes. So you're going to have to give me a little bit longer because I want, I have a, I have this, I have this this thing to talk to you guys, all of you, every single one of you to talk to you about. It's been a pleasure. You you always answer the right questions. Everybody asks the right questions. You can ask a wrong question, that's a good thing, right? You know, but you always were asked the right question, and it's been a pleasure to spend with you. If you need me on December 21st, I I will, I will get the phone in order. But if you guys have to, you know, scramble to get another meeting in before the the holidays, I will certainly be here. But it has been a distinct pleasure with you guys. Ask all the right questions. Great hand, you guys are in great hands. And Kim, Lori, Nicole, Adrian, Amy, Jen, thank you so much for, it's been a really great, it's been great. But I'll give you the big picture when I get on the, you gotta give me six minute, Kim, you gotta give me six minutes.
I promise, we'll slow the timer down.
A little bit. I'll, but I'll put my thing in there first. Brian, Jen, it'll be three. I'll put it in.
Right. Joan will take care of you.
So much.
We're going to be messed.
Thank you.
Trustees, anything else? Okay, we are going to go to public comments. I know Alan's waiting for us. We do, as I said, have two public comment submissions. So Alan, go for it.
Hi, my name is Colleen Zanet. I am a parent of three kids in the district, a high schooler, middle schooler, and an elementary schooler. I would like to read the letter that I wrote to the board for the public record. I write to once again express my support of reevaluating our current COVID-19 framework and reopening our schools for full time face to face instruction. Two thirds of parents who answered your survey expressed a desire to have their kids back in the classroom, some preferring part time and some preferring full time. The CDC, the American Academy of Pediatrics, and your own health advisory board are all recommending in person learning. However, it's become abundantly clear that we will face staffing issues as our kids go back to school, particularly in our high schools. Administration is dealing with the uncomfortable prospect of having teachers retire early, take a leave of absence, or simply quit rather than go back to the classroom right now. For a variety of personal reasons, some teachers simply will not go back to the classroom. And whether I agree with their decisions or not, I would never ask anyone to do something I'm not willing to do. I worked in one of our schools last year and told the principal this summer that I was prepared to go back whenever we reopened. I've already applied to be a substitute teacher. I will do whatever I can do to help get our kids back into school. Please don't think that I naively assume that anyone can walk into a classroom and teach. My kids have certainly benefited from some truly spectacular teachers over the years, and some people have a true calling to be a teacher. I understand you're looking at creative ways to try and get the kids back, and I certainly don't know the particulars of your contract negotiations. If a teacher of a particular class like AP physics wants to teach remotely, could the substitute teacher be an adult supervisor or assistant in the room while the teacher still teaches the class remotely? Could a motivated parent, how volunteer, manage an army of parent volunteers to come in and supervise kids if a teacher needs to be out for quarantine issues or other issues and there's no substitute available? Public trust in our school system is eroding fast. Majority of parents want their kids back in school. Publicly, teachers and administrators are saying school is the best place for kids to be, yet the kids are not there. Why? It doesn't take long to dig into the news and find ample evidence showing schools are not the driver of the spread of coronavirus. Child to child and child to teacher transmission is not a significant issue. And some schools in the country and around the world have been open without issue for months. Schools should have opened for in person learning at the start of the school year, and right now, we should be talking about what worked and what didn't work over these last three months. There are definitely going to be hurdles to overcome. We can't even begin to overcome them if we don't vote to get the kids back in school. I would also urge you to take a vote on a return to school date for high school, even though we don't have an indication from our governor yet, when she might reopen the high schools. Let's be ready to go the day we get the green light from the state. Thank you once again for all the hard work that you've been doing.
Hi, this is Eric Davidson. I'm a parent of the district, and we're hoping as you vote on the status framework tonight that it emphasizes the status more. Hi, this is Eric Davidson. I'm a parent of the district, and we're hoping as you vote on the status framework tonight, that it emphasizes the status more of the district buildings and classrooms and less on data from the New York Times and Oakland County. The infection rate's one of the items that you're looking at, and, um, this is very complex calculation. The numbers that it, it's taking it from are from the New York Times, uh, for a number of cases in Oakland County. But just looking at December 10th as an example, cumulative cases and the seven-day average were off by up to 13%. So keep that in mind when we consider this as a key metric. The age-banded county cases per 100,000 is a bit better. However, um, our students represent only 13% of that age band, um, for, uh, school age. And also, the county is enormous. Um, so what is a case then that we're basing all this on, those numbers? Um, well, it's based on two different types of tests that are very different. One's a PCR test, um, or probable as rapid tests. The PCR tests were not designed to determine if the person's infectious. They're looking for tiny fragments of genetic material. Uh, it's like finding a hair in a room after a person left it, basically. And, um, somebody could be three months past infection and still test positive. So it's very sensitive through something called an amplification process. It's almost like zooming in on the specimen. The New York Times showed that if we drop it to what's more reasonable of, um, 30, 30 to 35 of these cycles, um, that New York, 50% of their positives would be negative. In Massachusetts, 90% would be negative. Uh, we're assuming that Michigan's in the more sensitive category. The rapid tests are definitely recommended if you want to find out if somebody has it today and they're infectious. That's what your assumption is. So, uh, false negatives are based on timing. If you take it too early or late, so it's, they're cheap. So they recommend doing it more often. Um, Cranbrook and other schools are requiring this in order to return. So what we recommend is focus more on cases in the district, in the building, in the classroom, in amongst cohorts. Uh, we are also recommending offering testing, not requiring it, because I don't think you can. And, uh, we also thank you for getting our kids back in school next month.
Thank you to those community members, both of them, for your submission. Okay, trustees, two more things before we conclude the meeting. The first is approval of our general consent agenda in that, um, under that heading, there are five, excuse me, six pieces of, of information to be approved. The first is our monthly, our regular personnel report. The second, um, or sorry, yeah, three of them are, uh, three sets of meeting minutes, one regular meeting and two study sessions. And then the fourth or fifth piece is the Oakland County Cares Act Distribution Agreement. Something that we've, um, have entered into with Oakland County with regard to them giving us money for, um, COVID expenses. So trustees, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Okay, so like, Trustee Rass, second.
Second.
Seconded by Treasurer Holcomer. Any comments, edits to any of those pieces? Again, pretty straightforward how we do this every month.
Right.
Okay, if we're not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the consent agenda passes seven to zero. Um, last on the agenda, anything else, other?
Yeah, I just would like to, um, reiterate that in one of our sessions, we learned when, I believe, one of the trustees asked Dr. Roberson, what was best for students? Um, was it live streaming or having a separate virtual academy? And I believe the response was having a, a separate virtual academy for students. And so I just wanted to say that was one of the reasons that I voted for the model that we chose today, because it also aligns with the best practice for our student learning.
Anything else? Thank you, Trustee McKinney. Yeah, well, again, Trustee Jennings. January, so for the communities, FYI, our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 5th at 7:30 a.m. It's a study session. So Trustee Jennings, you are more than welcome to join us that early in the morning on a Tuesday. We look forward to seeing you.
I want to thank all you guys again, but, but, uh, it'll be one of those, those Tuesdays where I can sleep in, or it's gonna be later in the evening. You guys are the greatest.
Thank you. Okay, trustees, with that, we will adjourn at 10:36. Thank you, George. Thank you, central leadership. At, at Alan, Joan, everybody. Have a good night.